Well, it is four o'clock and I'll call this meeting of the Putnam County Planning Commission to order. Before we do our preliminary introduction, I need to ask members of the commission, is there anyone who had any ex parte communication with either of our applicants today? Okay, none?
Aye.
And did anyone have a, does anyone have a conflict of interest with either of the cases up today?
No, ma'am.
Anything else I need to ask Mr. Perry? Okay, with that being said, we will get started. My pen wants to roll away from me. ...the authority of CHIO Articles 11 and 12 of the Putnam County Land Development Code. The primary responsibility of the commission is to serve as an advisory body to hear and make recommendations to the Board of County Commissioners on matters related to provision of and proposed amendment to the Putnam County Comprehensive Plan and the Putnam County Land Development Code. The members of this board will review each application and make a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners at their regularly scheduled meeting on April 22, 2025. Procedurally, we will call each case by name and number. A member of staff will then briefly explain to us the nature of each request. We will then take any comments from the applicant or their representative, followed by any public comments concerning the request. Please direct all comments or statements to the board and not to other people in the audience. Before speaking, we will ask each person to be recognized, come forward to the lectern, and identify his or herself by name. After all persons wishing to speak have been heard, we will entertain a motion from the board. This motion will be voted on by the board members and will become our recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners. The Board of County Commissioners will make the final determination regarding the application. All applicants have the right to withdraw their request at any time during the application process. We don't have any cases that have requested to have withdrawal. The first case to be heard is rezoning 25-000001. Mr. Glaze.
Thank you, Madam Chair. For the record, Michael Graves, Planning and Development Services. This is rezone 2501. Ms. Kathleen Kelch requested a zoning map amendment from Agriculture Estate, Planning and Development, and Residential 1 to Agriculture Estate on an 18.14 acre property located at 205 St. John's Drive in Palaca to establish consistent zoning and allow for actual development to occur on the property. The surrounding zoning is a mixture of Agriculture Estate and Residential 1, with some residential estate across the street. The subject site has a future land use designation of rural residential, and according to the NWI Wetlands Layer and the FEMA Flood Zone map, there appear to be no wetlands on this property, with most of the FEMA flood zones being X and X-500, with a small portion of approximately one acre of AE special flood hazard area. Should the applicant's request be approved, the parcel will be eligible for building permits to construct a single-family residence adhering to the regulations of the Agriculture Estate zoning district, as well as any other development allowed by right in the Agriculture Estate zoning district. Here you can see an aerial of the property, the future land use, and the split zoning between the three different zoning districts. Staff recommends approval of their request to amend the zoning map from Agriculture Estate, Planning and Development, and Residential 1 to Agriculture Estate. Staff finds that the proposed rezoning is consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the adopted comprehensive plan, and meets the locational requirements of the Agriculture Estate zoning district provided in the Land Development Code and the Comprehensive Plan. Any questions?
Thank you, Michael. Any questions of staff?
I've got one. Do you know what the original PUD was put in place for?
It was a PUD known as Little Carter Acres, if memory serves right, which was a proposed multifamily and educational facility that was to be established in, I believe, 2006, 2007, but unfortunately, it was never developed during, due to the 2008 financial crash.
And that doesn't extend beyond what we're not seeing on this map?
No, sir. Originally, it was just that square there that you can see in the top-left corner. That property at some point was actually split by deed into two separate parcels, but Ms. Kathleen Kelch has actually purchased both of them and recombined them in an effort to help remedy some of the disconformities.
Okay, thank you.
No problem, sir.
Any other questions? You may.
So there's no underlying of the plat or anything like that, whatever we recorded? Or, because it appeared to me that it was almost, it might have been two separate? But what's the plat recording? I'm just wondering if there's any underlying document.
If you're referring to the planned unit development, there was never a plat or anything along those natures recorded, as it would have remained one parcel. Most planned unit developments have to remain one parcel unless they are specifically designed to be a residential suburb-style planned unit development, such as the upcoming D.R. Horton suburb. However, this one was designed to be a single unit, a single parcel, and it just was never developed and has since expired due to no development within the, I believe, two-year timeframe that they were given. As such, they could not develop it now, even if they wished, without having a new PUD established for that portion of the property.
Any further questions? Thank you. Is the applicant present or the applicant's agent? You don't have anything to add? Okay. Do we have any questions we'd like to ask the applicant? Okay.
I'll be honest with you, I like to see the stuff go back towards the agricultural leaning, away from the rural residential. If you might not have a problem with it, I'd move that we approve.
We've got, we've got a few.
Are we still discussing?
Well.
Carry on, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, are there any public comments? Are there any public comments, either for or against this application? Hearing none, I will close the public hearing portion of the meeting and bring it back to the board for discussion. Justin.
I move that we approve REZ 2500001. It is consistent with goals and objectives.
That was Stanley?
Yes, it was.
Okay, now, is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. All opposed, like sign. Thank you very much for being here, ma'am. Looks like we're good.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
A PUD is bad and two years?
The language of the PUD specifies the term that they have to build it out.
So you can, you can set your own time limit?
The PUD owner can request a certain time limit. We don't go extravagantly beyond what seems reasonable, but.
Five years?
Yeah, sometimes it's five, it can be up to 10, sometimes I've seen, but it's set by the individual owner and us and staff. Okay, then we'll move forward to rezoning case 250002.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Once again, for the record, Michael Graves, Planning and Development Services. This is rezone 2502. M.D. Distribution LLC through their agent, Crystal Crenshaw, are requesting a zoning map amendment from Commercial Retail C2 to Industrial Light IL on a 2.83 acre parcel located at 186 State Road 207 in East Palaca to establish zoning consistent with their existing business. The surrounding zoning districts are Commercial 4, Commercial Intensive C4, Commercial Retail C2, and Residential 2 R2. The subject site has a future land designation of commercial, and the property already contains a business wherein they machine and manufacture soft metal into roof parts. According to the NWI Wetlands Layer and FEMA Flood Zone Layer, there are no wetlands on this property, and the property is entirely in FEMA Flood Zone X, which is not a special flood hazard area. Should the applicant's request be approved, the applicants will then be, will then obtain the approval of their site plan from the Development Review Committee, DRC, as well as obtain any and all variances so requested for their development to become compliant with the Putnam County Land Development Code, LDC. From there, they shall be permitted to develop the property as approved by the Development Review Committee. Here you can see an aerial view of the property. Here you can see the future land use, the zoning, as you can see here. Staff recommends approval of the request to amend the zoning map from Commercial Retail C2 to the Industrial Light IL. Staff finds that the proposed rezoning is consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the adopted comprehensive plan, and meets the locational and requirements of the Industrial Light zoning district provided in the Putnam County Land Development Code and Comprehensive Plan. Any questions?
Yes, sir.
What's the?
I don't know, sir. Do I have to sort of follow my words?
Go ahead. Nope, I saw you first, so.
Go ahead.
So, one of the, in the staff analysis, it seems to indicate to me that the buffers that are required are being in some way put on other parcels in the area. It seems like the justification, you use the C2, I'm just wondering how that works, how you can transfer required code onto adjoining property.
So, we aren't requiring the buffer to be placed on, as a burden on other properties. What it is, is the Development Review Committee will review whatever new development occurs on this property, regardless of the zoning district. Anything that's non-residential has to go through Development Review Committee. At that point, they will determine what level of buffer is required and give access for the applicant to apply to the zoning board of adjustment for a variance to reduce, remove, or otherwise alter the buffer requirement from what is written in the Land Development Code. There are reasons that this may happen on many different properties, not just this one. If the, if the DRC says that they can get a variance and the zoning board of approval does not approve of the variance, then they will be required to meet the standard regulations in the Land Development Code for the buffer. Eighty percent of the buffer is the responsibility of the developer, the property that is being developed, and by extension, the developers of that property. Twenty percent of the buffer is technically the requirement in our Land Development Code of adjoining properties, but we are in no way saying that the majority or even the totality of the buffer is going to be the requirement of, say, the forested area on the Residential 2 property.
Again, I'm doing this, so what's the buffer in the, for C2, as it currently is on, what's the buffer requirement for that?
Going from Commercial 2 to Residential 2, that would be a 10A buffer, which means 10 feet wide, Class A. Generally speaking, that is a six-foot-high solid fence with about nine to 10 feet of grass on either side of the fence. As long as we have 10 feet width, we don't necessarily matter too much. What it is, when it goes from industrial to commercial 2, that becomes a 20B buffer, which is the same buffer requirement, only it requires a row of trees, and it has to be 20 feet wide as well. I believe if it was going to industrial heavy, which is the next step up from this, it would become a 30C buffer, which is frankly, more than they would need for the development of this scale.
Just one more. What are the setbacks, actually, two more, but what are the setbacks difference between, I want to get to something here in a second.
By all means, I understand. So, the main setback difference between the Commercial 2 and the Industrial Light zoning districts, the main one is the front setback, which is the side that the road is on. It is a greater setback from Commercial 2 to Industrial Light. Mind you, the only area that they have the road frontage is in the front where their parking lot is, and they naturally meet those already. There is an additional, I believe, five-foot setback requirement from Commercial 2 going into Industrial Light for their rear setback, which they would more than likely need to apply for some kind of setback variance for, given the nature of their already existing buildings.
I'll wrap it up after this one. Already existing buildings, so I met with staff and I asked about building permits, code violations. It seems like, it's a little vague as to what has been permitted and what has been constructed on this. Do you have any knowledge of any code violations or recent building permits since 2015?
To our knowledge, and based off of our records, we do not see any code violations having been filed for this property since then. All records indicate that all previous development has been permitted. In particular, there has been a canopy over one part that was permitted by the currently existing administration, because it was impervious over impervious and was designed solely for the purpose of giving a shaded work environment to the employees, which allowed it to be considered de minimis enough not to require a Development Review Committee process. Before that, there was another development, which was a, I want to believe it was another storage building, if memory serves right, in which case that was done by the previous administration, who unfortunately, no longer work here, so we aren't able to ask them how that was able to be skirted around DRC as well. It could be that they, at the time, thought that was also de minimis due to the nature of it being just storage, as opposed to like, actual workshop. It could also be a matter of there was something else in the code at the time, which has since changed.
I don't, I didn't want to go back in history or anything like that. I was just trying to figure out where we are right now. I appreciate that, thank you.
Not a problem, sir.
Is the operation they're running out of there now currently okay within the current zoning, or is it not compatible?
To our knowledge, they are machining soft metals into roof parts, which would constitute a industrial use, as it is technically manufacturing. Unfortunately, the Commercial 2 zoning district does not allow for manufacturing to take place of any caliber. The Industrial Light would be, of course, the ideal circumstance for this. The only commercial zoning district that does allow for manufacturing would be Commercial 4, and even then, they would need a special use permit in order to get that to happen.
I think I'm kind of piggybacking off of his questions, but were any of those manufacturing buildings put in the back as manufacturing facilities, or were they built under the guise of storage and then revamped after the county was out of there, I guess, to accommodate machinery? Or do we have any idea of how those buildings were actually intended to be used?
I'm afraid I can't answer that, unfortunately. I would have to defer you to either Mr. Zachary Baker, who looks like he's willing to speak, or the applicants themselves. As to our knowledge, it seems like they were just permitted naturally, and for whatever reason, it passed our code at the time.
Madam Chair, may I elaborate?
Certainly, thank you.
To our knowledge, with the permit history that we have on file within our current permit portal, the scope of works for all of those recent permits indicated some storage fixture, some accessory to the manufacturing use that's going on onsite. The manufacturing would appear to be located on the western side of the property and the larger buildings. But again, as Mr. Graves put, we can also defer to the applicant to find out the use of each of the buildings onsite.
Thank you. Are there any further questions of staff? Hearing none, I will ask if the applicant could come forward and talk to us about the, answer these questions possibly, that have been posed today. Please state your name and address for the record.
Business address or personal?
Business would be fine, I think, yeah. Please speak directly into the microphone.
Yep, okay. My name is Crystal Crenshaw. It's 186 State Road 207, East Palaca, Florida, 32131.
Okay, you're going to have to kind of eat that mic for the, for the system to pick you up. Okay.
Redo it, or?
That's better.
Okay. So, Crystal Crenshaw, I'm at 186 State Road 207, East Palaca, Florida, 32131.
Thank you. And talk to us about the current use and how it came to be.
Yes, ma'am. A big majority of the buildings that are currently in use were actually, I know this term is not correct, but it was grandfathered in, they were there when the building and the property was purchased. So that was already there. The additional building that we actually manufactured the metal in was put in, I do believe, in back in 2009, and it was solely intended for manufacturing at that time. No other additional buildings on the property manufacture. So, all of the other buildings that, you know, is on there were pre-existing. There's one in the middle, that's solely storage. There's like, a little shed, it's also just storage. The manufacturing is mainly in that grandfathered building, and then the additional is in the back.
Okay. Any questions of Ms. Crenshaw?
Yeah, if I could. What is that material that's currently in the back area back there? Is it pure concrete or similar type of material? Where you're parking and where all your, basically, the back two parcels there?
The back two parcels are still open. They are genuinely just used for parking. There's the back building, the only one that's back there is for manufacturing, so those back two parcels are for parking. So, I'm trying to make sure, not sure if we have a map, maybe you could point that out, that you're, you know, specifically referencing, so I could see it. But, the back portion of our property is storage for metal panels. When customers make mistakes, they're damaged, we put them in the back in case we can resell them, if not, we scrap them. Otherwise, it's parking, and there's dumpsters that come and go for the scrap of the material.
Yeah, what I was really quick of trying to get to is, it looks like around 2015, quite a bit of growth took place, and it appears, at least from aerials, that a lot of your impervious area expanded to allow for parking, to allow for storage. I'm saying impervious, I'm not sure, last year I was asking what kind of material, but it looks like a lot more area in the recent past has been added that is highly maneuverable for large vehicles, and I'm wondering what that material that's been placed.
Is it a concrete?
Is it concrete?
No, it's not concrete. We, the only concrete we have out there is on that production pad, which was back in 2007, 2009 area when it was poured. The back portion is not concreted, we wish, but unfortunately, it is not, and we have already had St. John's Water Management come out, and we have a letter of approval, and they've already inspected all of our grounds with what we currently have there.
Was that related to the permit that was applied for in 2020?
It is, yes, sir.
And that inspection was in 2020?
Yes, sir. And we haven't made any additional changes back there. There's no concrete.
Concrete bonds, they, it's not natural grassing.
Correct, it's not natural. There are millings that were out there, but St. John's Water Management fully are aware, and most of those millings are dissipated at this point, and we have not replaced them. Right now, we just drag it, and once they're gone, they're gone.
So, you were saying that they were aware that was in 2020 with the purpose of application?
Yes, sir. I would also like to comment that we've also made all of the special retention areas and have gone above and beyond to make sure, we also have all of the engineering to make sure that we are more than compliant for our impervious areas. We also have all of the engineering to make sure that we are more than compliant for our impervious areas.
Was the paving of the parking lot, the expansion in front of your building permitted through water management or accounted for or through the county?
I honestly don't recall. I was not in this part of the business at the time when the pavement was placed, but I will say that the pavement was there at the time of the St. John's Water Management letter and approval and permitting.
Do you know when that paving was added?
I don't, I'm sorry.
Okay. Are there any other questions of the applicant? Please stick around if we have any more.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak either for or against this application? Hearing none, I will bring it back to the board for consideration. Close the public hearing portion of this meeting. Discussion among the board.
My apprehension on this is if this were coming as a change to C4, say, I don't think we have an issue with it because it's already C4 established along that corridor. My apprehension is, is the direction of the board and the direction of the county want to open that up to be an industrialized corridor? And if so, this seems the right path. But if not, if we're concerned about the residential portion of the community that is adjacent to and along this corridor, the step to the industrial portion doesn't seem to job with me. And it's right there on the, I mean, it's right there on the verge. And again, I say it's the, it's what path we choose to take, and it may end up being the commissioners that make this call, obviously. Because I may or may not understand how they want to direct the county. But as this sits just at face value here, it seems to me that the industrial classification is maybe just step beyond what we need to be doing on that particular piece. That's just my opinion.
Thank you. This future land use is commercial in that area, it's not urban service. It's urban reserved to the east, but it's commercial the rest of the way. Talk to us about, Michael, if you could, the thought behind going to Industrial Light versus C4?
Once again, for the record, Michael Graves, Department of Development Services. It is a commercial future land use, as you mentioned, with urban service adjacent to it. The reason that we chose industrial as opposed to Commercial Four with a special use permit or the like, or even potentially a planned unit development, which frankly, that would be overkill, would be a planned unit development, is mainly because of the, for lack of a better term, it's more guaranteed to go through one plan, one alteration rather than trying to do two, three, or four. We could come to you and ask for industrial, which would match what is currently on this property. Commercial Four wouldn't match what's already on this property, and that would still be a nonconformity ultimately. They would then need to get that special use permit, and there's no guarantee that they would get that special use permit. There's no guarantee, of course, that you'll pass this, but it is more likely to get one alteration passed than trying to get five alterations passed in order to make something compliant.
But a noncompliance issue in an existing thing doesn't warrant us having to pass a rezoning, correct?
I'm questioning, are we rezoning to bring a nonconforming use into compliance? Because if that's where we're going to go, I have other concerns about the current site. Is that what we're trying to do?
Ultimately, what we're trying to do is we're trying to allow this business that has existed on this property for the past 20 years and has been machining soft metal into roof parts to be in a zoning district that is compatible with their desired business. It is a existing business, as I mentioned, and that, they are not by, earlier the applicant used the term grandfathered, which is an inaccurate term. We do not use that term, of course. But there is, there is code language indicating that existing nonconformities have a interest in attempting to comply with the Land Development Code. And through rezoning to appropriate zoning districts, we can assist them in complying with the Land Development Code. Commercial Four does not by itself result in a compliance. Industrial Light does. Our options to create a zoning that would immediately comply would be either Industrial Light or Planned Unit Development. And as I mentioned, Planned Unit Development is frankly a bit of overkill for this property. There is a, if you'll take a look at the zoning map, you'll notice that there is a Planned Unit Development located directly south of this property. That Planned Unit Development was a roof truss manufacturing development. And I say "was" because that Planned Unit Development has since shuttered. And because it's shuttered, would need to go through a complete rezoning process for any new development to take place on that property. No offense to the First Coast Roofing people, of course, but if for whatever reason their business was to shutter, manufacturing costs became too high, importing metal became too expensive for them, then a Planned Unit Development on this property would mean that nobody would be able to develop on this property or redevelop it until another rezon happened of any caliber.
Zach, if I may, I want to ask a question, please.
Yes, sir.
If, I'm trying to think back, I don't know when it was, but 2016, somewhere in there, the codes were changed. We used to have C1, C2, C3. Now we have C1, C2, C3, C4. And because we changed it, people were out of compliance, flat out. Because I had to go come back and put in for my own property to get in compliance. I was in compliance prior, but in order to sell the property and do it right, I got it back into compliance. And I think that if you look at the codes back when they started, that they were probably in compliance. And that because we changed the codes, the county, now they're out of compliance. That's what I think has happened.
But they didn't start manufacturing 20 years ago. They started manufacturing, what, somewhere between '09 and 2015? Is that '07?
2007.
But they were still in compliance in when it was changed.
The difference was, the difference was between retail, selling roofing material, that they were importing, reselling versus bringing in raw materials and producing through an industrial process.
That's right.
I think so, that's the, instead of lumping it all into one piece, like we're saying, it's been there for 20 years, you have to, you have to look at when the industrial portion of what they're doing there started, which is not at its inception, it is somewhere further along the way. And at that point, were we in compliance with land use at the time?
But our job is not to determine whether they're in compliance or not. Our job is to determine whether or not this property meets what we're saying they want to do.
I agree with you in that it meets current, so from that standpoint.
But I don't care whether they're in compliance or not. That's another, Putnam County has to address that, not this board.
If I may though, so I took the drive across the bridge, C4, C3, C2, everything with the exception of a box. Two parcels, one being the PUD that's just to the south of that, all complies with current zoning or the future land use. Where I'm a little questioning a few things is if we recommend lumping this all the way to industrial, it seemed, it's very rare, at least in my experience, that you actually see zoning work and future land uses working. And this is one of those corridors that's like coming into town. It's coming into our county. It's actually working, and it has a chance to work, with the exception of a few residential that will use the best, highest use of their property, of course. And that PUD, which the staff also mentioned, would have to be accounted for if it ever came back. To me, the C4 with a special use would keep that future land use, would keep everything in what someone's vision was. I'm day one here, okay? I don't know what the vision was, but again, it seems to be working. With a special use permit, they could still do their light industrial, but it wouldn't automatically allow all the other stuff that is associated with light industrial. Is that, I mean, I think I'm reading it correctly. Because once you get to light industrial, then it only takes a special use permit to go bulk storage of toxic chemicals. Basically, that right will be forever hung on that property. And it seems counterintuitive to go against current zoning, future land use. If there's an option available to help, we all want industry, we all want development, we all want jobs, and still comply with the greater plan, so to speak. And I just question why the C4 with a special use permit, which would allow what they're doing, bring them into compliance is not needed.
Zach, where does this lie in relation to the urban services corridor that we changed to with the, I know you weren't here when we did the comp plan revision, but we switched a lot of land along the 207 corridor to urban service. Where does that lie in relationship to this property?
Well, ma'am, I'm not sure that I have the answer to the question, would land switch to urban service at the last comp plan amendment? But I would like to provide some additional clarification. Right now, what we have on site is a nonconforming use, and the use is seeking an expansion, albeit a small one, but it would result in higher manufacturing capabilities. So as of right now, they're stagnant. They cannot expand in any way, shape, or form. And there's been a lot of discussion here today about C4 with a special use permit. Well, staff are obligated to provide a recommendation to the Planning Commission and the Board of County Commissioners. If we were to, if the applicant was to come before you as Commercial Four, we would not be able to recommend approval for that because the existing use does not comply with that zoning district as a use by right. It requires a special use permit. Conversely, we couldn't even try to attempt a path where we'd issue a special use permit first contingent upon an approved rezon because as part of our review of the special use permit, it has to comply with the allowed use in that zoning. And in C2, we do not have a manufacturing. And to go back a little further, Mr. Hancock brought up, you know, our zoning ordinance, at its inception, C2 was the highest zoning that we ever had in 1976, when established. And I don't, I'm not familiar with what the use was prior to this manufacturing, the metal roof manufacturing business. And I never like using this term in a public format, but I would assume that the prior use was a pretty significant, you know, heavy, intense use. More than likely, what we've, what we're encountering now is, you know, the checks were unbalanced through history, and it was allowed to grow a little bit, grow a little bit, de minimis impact, you know, so on and so forth, until you get to the point where now we really do want to intensify this use, both on paper and with labor and production. Where do we go from here? And so, as Michael put it, a PUD is an option, for sure. But we all know that PUDs are timely and frankly, the business is ready to expand yesterday. So having met with the property owner at a pre-application meeting, we said, you know, this is your clear-cut quickest path to compliance. And then even further, back to Mr. Williams, yeah, I mean, a portion of this rezon is to bring a nonconforming use into compliance. And at the end of the day, I think, you know, that's kind of the main objective of this department is to ensure compliance with land use. So, you know, industrial light is the zoning district that planning staff would have to recommend for approval for this specific use. But as we all know, at the end of the day, if the B.O.C.C. approves this, nothing is keeping M.D. distribution on that property. To bounce back to Mr. Williams, nothing is stopping that next owner to apply for a special use permit to do bulk storage of toxic chemicals. If the property were left with its current zoning and it gets, you know, goes through the rest of the process and it ends up in a denial, they would be able to maintain their use, you know, repair their use and keep their use, but they would not be able to intensify their use in a manner that would allow them to stay current with other roofing companies around them.
Were they compliant, were they within their use of the zoning when they started manufacturing in '07?
I don't have the answer to that question, unfortunately.
We'd have to go back and look at the '07 code and see what it said. Could you?
And the reason I ask that is because there's two distinct trains of thought here. If the code changed out from under them, they were compliant at that time and the code changed out from under them, then certainly that has one avenue to try to correct. There's more understanding that that's something we need to correct through no fault of the property owner and the business owner. Did they affect the change whatsoever? But if you are providing, let's say, a C1 service and without any planning or preparation other than build a storage building and put some equipment in it and start manufacturing, that use then becomes something that was not compliant at the time that it was started. And the avenue for correction needs to involve input from the owner as well. Like that's, so that's the kind of the two, the two things that I'm seeing here is, yes, they've been in business for a long time, but they're, what they do and what they produce has changed. There was a dramatic change, '12, '15, '20, whatever it was, years ago, when it went from being a retail store to an industrial process. Now, where that comes back together and how that gets rectified, I'm not 100% sure. But there has to be some, there has to be some thought given to what made that, was it compliant at the time of that change? Was it compliant when we said, all right, we're no longer going to be retail, we're going to be in industrial process? Do we care that our property is in compliance? And that's, so that's kind of, kind of where I'm on the fence about all this stuff is, is it through their actions that caused the noncompliance? Or was it the code being changed underneath them?
Well, I would think that what normally happens and what I've seen is as your business grows, you just grow your business. And you don't really think about your zoning. That's the least of your worries.
Well, I agree with that, but if I'm a corner store selling dog food and I go from selling cans of dog food, then now I've got a factory in the back that's canning dog food and selling it. That's two completely different processes, which is what we have here.
I understand. I understand what you're saying. But I'm saying that they're here today trying to get in compliance.
So, to that same point, if Commercial Two at some point was the most intense commercial there was, then C4 is the most intense commercial there is now. And then a special use permit would allow them to comply and keep moving forward. So, again, I just. So, again, I just go back to, once you rezone a property to a more intensive, and I'm going to call it intensive, I don't know if the term is, to this. But the next step is industrial-heavy and mining. This is not a little jump here. This is not from residential to whatever, to, this is from the most intense commercial you can do to, it's pretty, it's, it's pretty intense. And to the nonconformance at a time, legal non, nonconformance means under, or due to no action or fault of the person or the applicant. Houses are built too close, side setbacks, they bought them that way. That's a, a legal non-conforming law may not allow, and we make those things. If, if this use became non-conforming, that shouldn't really be something, in my opinion, it's considered, I mean, as justification for a full next level reason. So, like you said, I, I, I personally feel more comfortable with a C4 and a special use and, and assistance to them, given the fact that they are there doing work. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Any other questions of staff? Any other discussion? Michael, you had a question?
Actually, this is more of a comment on an earlier statement. And I mean no disrespect when I say this, of course. But earlier, you had mentioned what's stopping them if they go from, go to industrial light and then they want a special use permit for bulk storage of hazardous materials, for example. And the answer is actually the special use permit itself would stop them. I handle all the special use permits that come through our department, and I know the process fairly well. One of the requirements to obtain a special use permit is that you can't have hazardous materials as a factor for a special use permit. There are obvious exceptions, of course, such as intensive agriculture, and even then, that would be majorly determined by the locational, uh, the location of the development. This is on a major highway. This is the main artery going through that into the county, frankly. We would not allow hazardous materials in bulk storage to be on such a majorly traversed highway with so much residential and commercial development right next door to it for something like that. That just would not be compatible with the surrounding area or the land development code. Our special use permit process has securities in place that would prevent a lot of the, a lot of the headaches that you're anticipating, I suppose the proper term would be, from becoming a possibility if they were to get industrial light. Would they still have access to a lot of industrial light capabilities? Absolutely. That would be their right. But stuff that would be considered industrial-heavy and would require a special use permit industrial light, or would be, again, solely for industrial-heavy, that just would not be allowed just because of how incompatible the surrounding zoning is and surrounding uses.
Well, I think to the point, the special use permit is another level of control. It keeps that whole area from becoming one gigantic industrial zoning, because, because as soon as you zone out one industrial, the neighbors immediately say, I won't mind it be, I won't mind it be industrial light. Well, if that's true, then that whole corridor has the potential to become industrial light on there. I think with, and I know it's a complication from a staff perspective, but the C4 zoning with a special use gives one, another layer of control to kind of allow that expansion on that particular property without giving the free rein up and down the corridor there to become industrialized overnight. So, I think, I think that's, I think we're seeing eye to eye on that as far as the, the process. It's not, we're not, we're not saying no, the, the, what's going on on that property can't go on. We're not trying to argue that into a code case. I think the, I think the overall event here is trying to get that to a thing that's consistent with the stuff around us while still finding a path for them to do what they've been doing there for years. So I don't think that, I don't think we're looking for a denial in the, in the aspect of we don't want them to be able to work there. I think we're wanting to deny, and I'm, I mean, however it lays out, I think we're looking for a course of action that also, although somewhat tedious on staff's part, and we apologize for that, but it, it provides an avenue that kind of keeps that corridor in check. I guess that's, that's all.
Other comments or questions or concerns? At this point, I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion, REZ 25-00002. Recommend approval as it meets the goals and objectives of the county, uh, Land Development Council.
Do I have a proper motion? Do I have a proper second?
So, Madam Chair, our alternative would be to-
Deny.
To deny, and then?
It's up to the applicant to come back.
We're not allowed to make a motion to deny.
Well, we'll have this one down.
That was a big story.
So, so they will return to-
What will happen if we deny it? They will have to go back to planning and development and seek the other path? No?
No, ma'am. If, if the planning commission today recommends denial, it goes to the board with a recommendation to deny, and then ultimately would be the board's decision.
Right.
Would I recommend that, excuse me, Madam Chair, could we recommend what we just spoke of to go along with this? I deny it? Yeah. It doesn't-
It's the applicant's decision.
It's, well, the trick is, so if you recommend denial for this application and recommended that they go back for C4 with a special use permit, it's going to put staff in a position where, when it comes back for C4, because the special use permit is not heard concurrent, we can't rec, staff won't be able to recommend approval.
Right. They have to make that.
Right.
Respect the CDOA.
We'd go, no, no, no. We would come to planning commission with a recommendation for denial for C4 because we cannot guarantee that special use permit. And then it would be basically taking them for their word that they will apply for that special use permit.
But we could, we could, we could make a conditional recommendation to the board of county commissioners, right? Like, we could recommend based on the approval of the supplementary use permit that the C4 change be approved, correct?
The issue is, you can't do conditional zoning, and that's what that would be. We, we approve it to be C4 if they get a special use permit. We can't do that by, by Florida statute. That's, that's where you would do a PUD.
Let me remind you, we have a motion on the floor. We do not have a second. What is the board's, do I hear a second? Then the motion dies for lack of a second. Do I hear a motion for denial?
Can we make one of those?
Yeah. The motion's off the floor.
There was a big philosophical discussion about four months ago about not making a motion to deny.
Right. That's not something we usually-
Do we, do we remember that discussion?
Oh, yeah, we do remember that discussion.
Okay. All right. Well, in, in that case, I'm, I'll make a motion for REZ 2 to deny, REZ 25-00002, as it is not, in our, in my opinion, consistent with goals and objectives.
And surrounding parcels.
Second.
Did I hear a second down there? Hey, Mr. Williams?
Madam Chair, can we please clarify what the motion to deny and all that? And, and Mr. Perry, if you'd like to assist, that'd be great.
Yeah, so as a matter of fact, Mr. Morris, if you want to make another motion, I'd suggest you use the example in front of you and leave out what your opinion is.
Okay. All right. So let's see. Motion example.
It's also, would be spot zoning of industrial in that area. Can that be included in the motion?
Say again, ma'am.
It would be, industrial is no, is not in that area right now. It would be bringing industrial into an area that's commercial.
How about this? I move that we recommend to the board of county commissioners, deny rezoning, REZ 25-00002, as it is not consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the Republican County Comprehensive Plan.
Sound okay?
Sound okay?
That's what's written there.
I agree. That is that section.
Yep.
How is it not consistent?
Yeah. We're just a deviate from consistency with the comp plan.
All right.
No, we don't, we don't need why it's not consistent.
Okay. Correct.
Yep.
No, ma'am.
Just need a yes or no.
We got a sidebar over here. You have to tell us what's not consistent.
Apparently, it does require some sort of explanation as to why it isn't consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the Republican County Comprehensive Plan. I'll also look up a few things right quick.
Certainly.
Is not, is the fact that it's not in compliance with future land use enough to say that it's not?
Light industrial is allowed in the commercial future.
Well, here's my position. Staff said it's in compliance, so you have to show me where it's not. Staff did all their research, and they came back and said it's, it meets the goals and objectives. That's what it said. So.
So, Mr. Graves, you mentioned that light industrial is part of the Commercial 4 future land use.
Yes, sir. That is part of Section A, point 1, point 9, point 4, point, A, point 5, point, I want to say D.
I'm impressed.
Thank you.
Yes, it is part of commercial.
If it was heavy manufacturing, then it would not be allowed in commercial. It would need an industrial future land use, but light industrial can exist in the commercial future land use. In addition, spot zoning was mentioned earlier. Whenever you go from one zoning type to another, it's always going to be technically spot zoning, because like if you're having commercial appear in residential, it's going to be spot zoning. But at the same time, it is considered seeding almost to have the highest level intensity of one lead into the lowest intensity of the next. So in a sense, residential 2 would lead into commercial 1 almost. And likewise, the Commercial 4 that's already there would technically be a C for industrial light. So technically, you could say it's spot zoning. Technically, you could also say it's not because of the Commercial 4 and the PUD for that matter, which is also light industrial.
Thank you. Mr. Perry?
Yes, ma'am. Madam Chair, after speaking with county staff, we're not exactly sure when these motion examples were updated, particularly we're asking for reasons why something's being denied. And looking over Chapter 45, and particularly with the board that's convened today, I don't see anything in there about that, having to make a, an explanation of why it's denied. And after conferring with staff, it's up to the applicant to basically approach the matter again in whatever way they seem to see fit to try and get what they're looking for in the first place. Does that make any sense?
So you're recommending that we don't require a reason for denial?
No, I can't see anything to say that you have to. That's what I was trying to determine. But it keeps showing up on the bottom of our, our motion pages.
Let me ask this question of staff. Can you point to the code sections that specifically guided you to recommend approval? Other than what you just said, Zach? Is there something else? Or Mike? Is there something else?
They would be the sections that are listed out in the staff report. The future land use policy that allows for industrial light in the commercial future land use category is one of them, of course. The others would be the zoning regulations based off of the development type that's already there. In a rezon, you're not supposed to look at the development that is proposed or in the, or the development that is technically existing already. You're not supposed to look too much at that. But when it comes to the actual zoning, in this case especially, where there is development there, we kind of have to almost, even if that shouldn't be the crux of our argument. But ultimately, the future land use category states that this is allowed. We, the Comprehensive Plan is very clear that there is nothing against this type of zoning existing within this future land use category. Same with this development that has existed and will hopefully continue to exist for many years later in this property. The zoning allows for it. The maps of FEMA, the infrastructure, everything else say that it's allowed. The staff report, as I point out throughout several points of it, there's nothing explicitly in our code that says it can't, and a lot of points that say that it can. It would need to be, ultimately, there's nothing that I could find when I was doing research for this that said that this isn't allowed, other than, as you mentioned, potentially the case of spot zoning, or even potentially urban sprawl. But as mentioned in the staff report, we don't believe this to constitute urban sprawl because it is technically an already existing development that is essentially infilling what is already there and already designated to be more commercial in the future. And as I mentioned before, you could classify this as spot zoning, but between the PUD, which is already industrial light, and the Commercial 4, there really isn't a better place than you could find a newly created industrial zone without having an entire block dedicated to industrial future land use, and then slaying everything in that block becomes industrial light or industrial heavy, like I believe they tried in the Crescent City area a few, about a decade ago.
Mm-hmm. I remember that one. I think one of the things, too, a principle that's not a written principle, but it's something that I have seen, and I think you've probably seen, Chris, is that when we have a situation where we have split zoning and, or a non-compliant zoning, we have done everything we can to bring that property in compliance with the existing use of that property. So that's a, just a guiding principle, I think, that we've had.
Should we be confirmed?
Chris is going to go check them out. And I think that, over the years, I've seen the commission do the same kinds of things. But we've had a lot of properties come before us that had non-compliant zoning, whether they had a codes enforcement case against them or not. We've had some that had codes enforcement problems, and they've come before us for a change in zoning to make, to shoehorn that property into compliance with the use that was already on it. So, we have a motion, a proper motion, and a second on the floor, or a motion and a second on the floor, to deny this particular zoning. Are we ready to vote?
Madam Chair, I would say that the information that Mr. Graves just mentioned, that light industrial is part of the future land use for commercial, that's more, that's good information for me to, to know. And it may have been discussed earlier, but I missed it. I mean, I'm hearing a lot of good information on both sides.
Me, too.
But I think that's important information to have.
Thank you. Mr. Hodge down there, you got a question or comment you want to make to us? You're being quiet.
I'll make a comment. I, I- It can be fixed, it can be fixed, right? If we deny it today, it can be fixed.
Well, it could be fixed with the Board of County Commissioners.
Right.
Or it would have to go back and be a different, different application. Or it would have to go back and be a different, different application. So.
Madam Chair, before we vote though, I'd like to just mention something though, that although we can't find any authority for having to state why we're, why, if this is denied, why it's being denied. But it also, it's probably, it's an interesting thing to think about, that if the, if our county commissioners are faced with what's on the record here today, it's going to be an awful tough job to try and figure out what's going on.
That's why they get paid the big bucks.
Well, but what I'm trying to say is, is it would be nice if, and I'm not telling you have to do it, but if there is a reason why, you know, it's not being approved or why it needs to be denied, it'd be nice to have it on the record so that our commissioners could at least look at it and try and make some sense out of what's going on with this particular.
I'll say that, and I appreciate all the work that staff puts into this. However, everything that staff reads is interpretation. It's their, their opinion of how they read that code. And not that most of it's not pretty black and white, but in the grand scheme of things, it's their opinion of, of what the code says. And as a board member, I feel like part of, part of our interpretation of that is what the general direction of the county is going. And, you know, we, the, the, keeping things consistent in these areas when these anomalies pop up. So, whether or not is a specific line in the code that we're saying no to, or a general, this is what we feel like the intent of the code is, I feel like that's, that's the, that's the direction for the approval or denial. There, there may be a lot of things that come through here that we don't really know that for 100%, they should be approved, but because the direction that that is taking, whatever the case may be, whether it's a rezoning or a change in, whatever it may be, that the overall view, the big picture view of the item that comes through is each individual board member's interpretation of what they feel the code is directing. So that, I mean, I, if I had to put one thing on it, I would probably have to spend a little time in the Land Development Code. But as an overall, general board member's view of what I feel like the code intends, and that it's intended whether through urban sprawl or, you know, consolidation of light zoning, I, I feel like the direction of this is, don't allow something that can, that can adversely affect that entire area in a matter of short term. And so, you know, that's not a code section. That is just kind of how I interpret not only the Land Development Code, but my job as a, as a board member.
And I can respect that totally, and I respect your saying that. I think the one thing that I hang up on is you're saying in your motion that this application and this rezoning is not consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of Putnam County.
I can adjust the motion to say the goals and objectives as I understand them.
You got to use the verbiage that we're supposed to use. So, I can understand why you would have to state why. If you're going to say they're not in compliance, well, what are they not in compliance with? And I think that's the, that's where I'm hung up on it.
Can I ask one other question?
Absolutely.
So, when you say industrial is allowed in this zoning, is that by right or by special use permit?
In accordance with Putnam County Comprehensive Plan, A., Point 1., Point 9., Point, no, whatever it is for the commercial future land use category, when it comes to industrial use, light manufactured is allowed by right in that future land use category. It is, heavy manufacturing is not allowed in the commercial future land use category. At that point, you would need to have a future land use map amendment to industrial in order to do any kind of heavy industrial zoning or development of that kind. That is actually something we would also look for on special use permits to make sure that you're compliant with not only the zoning, but also the future land use category.
Alright, I'm looking through the list on page four of nine of the allowable uses in the C-2 district. I see retail sales, retail sales, food in general, services, office, commercial recreation, entertainment, cultural, civic, religious facility, child and adult daycare, nursing home, hospital, assisted living, passenger vehicle service limited to tire, battery, and oil change, lodging, emergency services, car wash, and drive-through facilities, and a club. Special use permit would be required for education, essential public services, and others would be nightclub, portable building, sales, and mini warehouse. Where is light industrial come into that?
Light industrial starts at commercial four, not commercial two. Light industrial is allowed with a special use permit in commercial four.
So, we're switching from light from C-2 to IL?
Industrial light, yes, ma'am.
Well, I think they're making the distinction between the future land use versus the current zoning. They're saying, they're not, they're not saying the current zoning allows for industrial. They're saying
Right.
that the future land use of commercial allows for
Right.
the, the development into industrial. But regardless of that, there's no path that that doesn't come before this board, and the opinions of this board say that seems consistent with what needs to happen in that area, or it doesn't seem need, you know, it's not like, just because it's allowed by right in the future. My, my comment was, just because it is allowed, just because industrial use is allowed in commercial future land use, there's no avenue that, just because by right it's allowed in that future land use, that the zoning is automatic. There's, there's, there's no path that, that changing from commercial to industrial use doesn't come before this board with the intent of having it addressed as whether or not it's viable or right for the area. Am I correct in saying that?
I don't know if you are or not. Is that something that comes through the county, Zach?
Yes, yes, you're, you're correct with that.
Okay. So, so regardless of by right or not, future land use, we're, we're not talking about future land, we're talking about current zoning. And in current zoning, you want to do something that steps up beyond it, it has to come before this board, in which the opinions of this board, the opinions of the interpretation of the code, and the opinions of the direction of the county have to be administered to whatever the current problem is. And that's where we're at.
Correct. So, the land that is there currently does not meet the qualifications to do what they want to do. So, they had, we have to change it to get them to be compliant. That is the whole goal of what we're doing tonight, today. And so.
Change the, or change what they're doing on the property.
Correct.
Go back to a retail, I mean, that's
Well, that's up to them.
One simple solution, we go back to being retail, not being industrial. But that's not what they want to do, and we're not trying to say that's what you should do.
Our, our goal as staff is
But there are more solutions than just, we need to rubber stamp it with an industrial zoning and let it carry on. That's
Yes, sir. So, our goal as staff is to get them in compliance. So, what they're doing is how we get them in compliance. We can have come people come to us and have a site that is C-2, and they don't tell us what's going there. So, they can move it to industrial, whatever they like to do, and they don't necessarily have to tell us what they're doing there. So, this is not the case with this, because this has been done for some time. Our goal is to get them compliant. If you guys want to go in a different direction and you deny it, that the board decides to do something, we will be back with the applicant if they want to do something different with that. But yes, to change the current zoning, even the SUP wouldn't come before us, it would go from ZBOA, but it would have to go before a board to change the, the use of that piece of property. Yes, sir.
Okay.
But, so if we, if, if this board recommends rezoning, that's the use, right? What about the current site that's not compliant, either C-2, C-4, industrial? It's probably pushing mine, I, I don't know, because at C-2, there's so much impervious, there's setbacks, there's none of that. We're going to, what's being proposed is to fix it so they can use what they have and what they want to. Where is the, where is the assurance that this whole property will ever come into compliance? If we do a special use permit, that allows them to keep working, keep growing, but wouldn't that also be another trigger to bring the C-2, current C-2 into compliance or impervious? Let's see, buffer zones. Because right now, I mean, I can't, it's basically clear property lot, property line, and, you know, at C-2, it's only 75% impervious, I think. C-4, also your setbacks get there. So, right now, you know, setback for, a side setback for C-2 is 10 feet. We go to industrial light, it's 35 feet. Aren't we rezoning and creating more issues? Because legal nonconformance is something that they didn't do. Since 2015, there's been a lot of additional, at least based on aerial, stuff. Are we trying to fix the nonconformances for the job, or the industry, or the manufacturing? Are we trying to assure, and then what, what gives, I mean, what makes sure they come into compliance when they go to that new zone?
DRC would, would make sure they're coming into compliance once, if it was zoned light industrial.
Does it trigger a code enforcement review? Does code enforcement go out there? Is there anything in the function? I think that, I think that's the, the jut of the question is, if, if we were to get ready to approve this zoning, is, does code enforcement go out there and say, this is about to be industrial, let's pull open the industrial section of the book and make sure that everything's in compliance? Or is the rezoning to fix the zoning issue creating a bunch of noncompliance issues from a code or, you know, on-site standpoint? You know, yes, we're fixing, if, if we were to say, yes, let's, let's, let's approve the, the industrial zoning, we were to say that, we were to approve, approve that. And all the things that are on that property are, that were compliant in the existing zoning are now noncompliant because there's a setback, are we just going to say, well, that's grandfathered in because they were there, it's a nonconforming part of it, we're just, code enforcement doesn't care about that?
Correct.
Because it certainly seems that that's not the
We, so, to say all that, I don't, if I had a code complaint, we're going to investigate no matter what is there.
Correct.
Would this trigger that? That would depend on, I can't tell what the future's going to do, right? So, if you guys said no, B OCC says no, then we would have to figure out how to get into compliance, right? So, we'd have to adjust, if there was a code complaint, then we would investigate, and we would want them to come into compliance. This would be a part of them, if they had an open codes case, this would be a part of them coming into compliance to have the code case dropped, right? So, that's, it, it's a mix. So, it's hard to say, like you're saying, what, what's the stick or the carrot, right? That's kind of what you're asking, and so it really depends on the situation. This situation right here, I don't have a stick. I have no code complaints, there's been nothing brought to us. So, right now, we're trying to, the applicant came to us, we're bringing you guys, what would bring them in compliance, and that's where we are. So, I do understand both sides of what you're saying, and which I'll decide, then we'll push it to the B OCC, and then we'll go from there.
I have a question for staff. When you did the review, how out of compliance will they be on the light industrial setbacks and buffers?
They will, with their current development, be pretty significantly out of compliance. However, it is the DRC process where they would come into compliance. The DRC would review their site plans for any new expansion, and at that point, we would tell them, hey, you need to meet these setbacks, you need to meet these buffers. And we would also, as is the right of any property owner, give them the option to apply to the zoning board of adjustment for variances to reduce those. It would be highly possible for them to request from the zoning board of adjustment a setback reduction for the currently existing buildings. That would allow them to keep the current C-2 zoning setbacks for their currently existing buildings. Any new buildings would have to meet the setback requirements for the industrial light zoning district. However, the, the benefit of variances in special use permits is that we can put conditions like that on there that would ensure that, say, they sold off the property to somebody else, that new industrial light zoning wouldn't be able to take the quote-unquote grandfathered buildings and say, yeah, we're going to put a generator in here or something. We're just, they would need to make a, and it would need to meet setback requirements.
Thank you. Alright, are you ready to vote? I'll ask that question again. Okay, we have a motion on the floor to deny because it's not consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the Putnam County Comprehensive Plan. I'm going to do a roll call vote. Stanley?
Yes.
Deny? Matt?
Yes.
Justin? Oh, sorry, Jason?
Yes.
Chris?
Nay.
Now, Justin?
Yes.
And the chair votes nay. So, this will now go, move to the Board of County Commissioners for April 22nd. And staff, if you could delineate those reasonings for approval, and if there are any possible routes for denial, if we can get those to the Board of County Commissioners. Yes, we will take five. Thank you for coming, Ms. Grenchaw. Your next appointment here in this building will be April 22nd. Your next appointment here in this building will be April 22nd. It's 5:33, I'll call this meeting back to order. Mr. Baker, we're doing a text amendment to the Land Development Code.
Yes, ma'am, that is correct.
Okay. Take it away.
All right. For the record, Zachary Baker, Planning and Development Services. Case number is LDC25-000001. This application is county-initiated. This is a text amendment to the Putnam County Land Development Code proposing amendments to Articles 2, 3, 6, 7, 9, 11, 12, and 13 of the Putnam County Land Development Code, which was amended in July through ordinance 2024-12. So, this slide isn't super applicable to the Planning Commission because all it says is whenever an amendment to the allowed uses in a zoning category change, the Board of County Commissioners must consider the item two times at two different public hearings. So, this is, this is for their information.
And this will go to the, the County Commission on April 8th?
That is correct, yes, ma'am. And then, the second Board of County Commission meeting will be determined at April 8th meeting. It's worth noting, too, because it's not anywhere in this PowerPoint, more or less, and it is documented within the staff report. The intent with this, the county-initiated text amendment here was, was about 90% to clean up some of the, the errors, whether it's Scrivener's errors or, you know, congested language, or whatever the case may be, from our last amendment that we were not able to identify before it got adopted. That said, there are some modifications to the code which staff feels is kind of in line with the, the intent of the Land Development Code as is. So, my PowerPoint presentation is more or less just a summary of the proposed amendments. If, at the end, we have questions about, you know, which amendments are being suggested, I just request that we, we specify the section number so that I can flip to it in my, my packet up here next to me. But within Article 2, Division 3, that would be uses allowed within zoning districts. We've got a clarification on permit requirements for artificial ponds in the ag and residential estate zoning district. Clarification on permit requirements for borrow areas in the ag zoning district. An inclusion of emergency service, services as allowed by right in all residential, agricultural, and commercial zoning districts. The inclusion of accessory dwelling units with an approved special use permit for existing commercial uses in commercial zoning districts. Within Article 2, Division 4, accessory uses in structures, there's an inclusion of nonresidential farm buildings for bona fide farms in that section identifying what accessory uses are permitted prior to a primary use. There are modifications to Table 2.04A relating to accessory dwelling units in commercial zoning districts. There are setback exemptions for wellhouses not exceeding certain square footage and height thresholds. And there's a clarification added... Whichever's easier for you.
That might be better for us, if you don't mind.
Okay.
So, we don't get too bogged down in things. Do Section 40...
I mean, I can do that, too. It, it really is the discretion of the Board at how we look at these, these text amendments. I realize that it's probably a little, little small on, on the print.
Yeah.
I don't know what section this is.
Can, can we stop with Article 2 and just do Article 2 the first time?
Article 2. Yep.
Sequence.
All right. So, if it's easiest, I can run through my packet that I have here and more or less read out what the strike through and the underlines are. All right. So, for Section 45-72, which is the allowed uses in the agriculture zoning district, we are adding two artificial ponds that are five acres or less in size, the addition being in accordance with local, state, and federal permitting requirements. We are also adding that emergency services be an allowed use by right in the ag zoning district. With that, we struck emergency services as a use requiring a special use permit. And then, for still requiring a special use permit would be borrow areas greater than one-eighth of an acre, and the change being in accordance with local, state, and federal permitting requirements.
Okay. Any questions about the items in Article 1, Article 2? We'll do it all together at the end. Just want to go through and see if there are any questions or comments or concerns, one article at a time.
All right. And, and just please bear with me, because a lot of the changes in this first article are very similar. So, with ag estate, it's pretty much identical to agriculture. So, we are adding emergency services as a use by right, striking it as a use with a special use permit. And then, for artificial ponds, one acre or less in size, we are adding in accordance with local, state, and federal permitting requirements. And then, for uses with a special use permit, artificial ponds that are greater than an acre in size would be done in accordance with local, state, and federal permitting requirements.
Okay. Mr. Woodward, are you wanting to speak on any of these?
Yes, ma'am.
Would you like to speak on the items in Article 1, Article 2?
Yes, ma'am.
Please come forward and state your name and address. Let's just go through each article at a time, and then...
We're still in Article 2, though, ma'am.
Okay.
Michael Woodward, 517 South Francis Street, Interlochen. We should all be grateful to Mr. Baker for his initiative, his expertise, and his hard work in creating the LCD Amendment Package that we have before us today. It is overall an excellent document, and I hope at the end of the day, you will recommend approval of most of it. Of concern, however, is the proposed change to the status of emergency services uses, a category that includes fire department stations, sheriff substations, EMS stations, and emergency operations centers. The only zones in which emergency services uses are not currently allowed at all are mining, light public use, and conservation. The Land Development Code currently allows emergency services uses by right in commercial zones C2, C3, and C4, as well as in light industrial, heavy industrial, and heavy public use. Emergency services uses are currently allowed by special use permit in all agricultural and residential zones, and in professional office, CPO, and neighborhood commercial, C1, zoning. The Land Development Code's current requirement for a special use permit in those zones is not an oversight or a glitch. It was included in the Land Development Code in acknowledgement of the fact that not every type and size of emergency services facility is going to be compatible with every particular location in those zones. And so, case-by-case determinations need to be made by the ZBOA or the Administrative Deviation Committee. Those case-by-case determinations involve public hearings where residents and business owners who know their local neighborhoods and roads better than anyone else are given notice and opportunity to provide relevant evidence to the decision-making body. But what is being proposed today is to do away with the special use permit requirement for emergency services uses in all residential, agricultural, and low-intensity commercial zones. That would mean that any type of emergency service facility of any size would be automatically allowed anywhere in those zones with no notice to the public and no opportunity for nearby residents and business owners to have any input. There is no need to make such a change. I share with Mr. Baker, and I'm sure with all of you, a desire to see emergency services facilities widely dispersed throughout the county. But requiring special use permits in certain zones is not stopping and is not going to stop that from happening. Experience tells us that most SUP applications will get approved, some of them made more compatible with the addition of conditions that go above and beyond the normal development standards. Once in a while, though, the evidence presented at an SUP hearing may prove to the satisfaction of a ZBOA or ADC that a particular emergency services facility would simply not be compatible with a particular location. But that doesn't mean it wouldn't get built. It just means it would get built somewhere else, somewhere better. It means an appropriate decision was made by means of an appropriate process, a process that should not be discarded. Do the Commissioners have any questions for me?
I'm just bringing it forward.
Thank you.
Okay. Any questions of staff, of, of, commissioned to staff? Then, Zach, please continue.
Why was that language changed?
Simply based on the fact that emergency services are a benefit to the health, safety, and welfare of the community. Make them more widely available, make them to where it's easier to be located than any property. I mean, Mr. Woodward brings up a good point that, you know, giving the public the opportunity to weigh in on the location of these service facilities is, you know, it's ideal. If, I don't know all of y'all's opinion, but someone may not want emergency sirens and lights going off at 3:00 a.m. out across the street from their road. But ultimately, just to make it more attainable throughout the county.
With the approval being possible by the Administrative Deviation Committee, what's the likelihood of a placement of a special use permit to place a, an emergency, obviously a public facility in ag, going to be that it would come before the ADC or go to the ZBOA?
And so, anecdotally, there, there was a, a new fire station that is currently under construction... So anecdotally, there was a new fire station that is currently under construction in the west end of the county. It went through the Administrative Deviation Committee for a special use permit. I think there was one citizen that showed up and simply asked, you know, what's going to be going on with lights and sirens, to which one of the members of our deviation committee highlighted that there would be a buffer requirement and that they realized that it is an agrarian residential area and that they would establish some form or protocol as to not sound the five alarms at, you know, certain hours of the night. With that said, though, the special use permit was approved unanimously by the ADC with no conditions which would ensure that. However, through the development review process, it was ensured that a buffer which was consistent with our Land Development Code was placed on the properties surrounding edges. So...
Okay. Thank you. Moving on.
So I think we're still in the residential estate zoning district. Similar to ag estate, we would allow for artificial ponds less than one acre in size in accordance with local, state, and federal permitting requirements. We would add emergency services. We would add artificial ponds greater than one acre in size in accordance with local, state, and federal requirements if approved by a special use permit. Striking from that section, emergency services as a required special use permit approval. Residential One, this is where it gets a little bit easier. We're adding emergency services by right, removing it as a special use permit requirement. Residential Two zoning district, same thing, adding emergency services by right, striking emergency services with a special use permit. Sorry, my fingers are dry, and I'm trying to flip pages as quickly as I can. For the residential three, which is a multifamily, low-intensity zoning district, we would be adding emergency services by right, striking it with a special use permit. Residential four, which is a higher intensity multifamily, adding emergency services by right, striking with a special use permit. Residential manufactured home park, also known as mobile home parks, same, adding emergency services by right, striking emergency services with a special use permit. And the commercial professional offices zoning district, which is CPO, adding emergency services by right, striking emergency services with a special use permit, and then adding with a special use permit accessory dwelling units occupied by owner or tenant of existing commercial use. And for the record, it's not owner or, it's owner/tenant. Moving on, commercial neighborhood C-one, adding emergency services by right, striking emergency services with a special use permit, and then again, adding accessory dwelling unit occupied by owner/tenant of existing commercial use with a special use permit. And then for commercial retail C-two, we're simply adding accessory dwelling unit occupied by owner/tenant of existing commercial use with an approved special use permit. C-three, there is a strike of major and minor arterial roadways within the purpose, and we will get to major and minor arterial roadways a little further on in this text amendment proposal, as will Mr. Woodward. But nonetheless, the addition to the C-three zoning district would be allowing accessory dwelling units occupied by owner/tenant of existing commercial use with an approved special use permit. And within the C-four zoning district, same as C-three, striking major and minor from the purpose and adding accessory dwelling unit occupied by owner/tenant of existing commercial use as an allowed use by special use permit approval. That is the completion of Article Two, Division Three. Would you like me to do Article Two, Division Four now, or?
We'll bring them up when we get to them. The accessory dwelling units, there is a, I think, a bill pending in the legislature addressing those and making them used by right in many of the zoning districts of Florida. Is that correct?
Yeah, I mean, as I've read it, the statute that it currently exists encourages municipalities and jurisdictions to allow accessory dwelling units in single-family zoning districts. It also encourages communities to allow rental of those accessory dwelling units. I believe what's being proposed now is making it to where we cannot prohibit rental of an accessory dwelling unit.
But it can't be for just short-term, one-night-at-a-time kind of thing. It's got to be a longer term?
I'd have to read through that bill again. I've only read it once. And I do know, though, it is specific to residential zoning districts. And further to elaborate, we have a weird situation where our comprehensive plan allows residential uses in the commercial future land use map, but there's no platform or method for which a property owner can apply for an accessory dwelling unit in their C-two zoning district.
As I understand it, these are going to be, could these be tiny homes, or?
So they would have to conform to the accessory dwelling unit regulations that are currently in place, which requires either Florida Building Code compliant conventional construction or Florida Building Code compliant modular construction. So if somebody had the ability to acquire a cargo container and convert that into a residential unit, then they would be able to do that. They would not be allowed to do a mobile home, or an RV, or a tiny home that's on wheels. Yes, sir. So the size requirements right now is the minimum square footage of 375 square feet, a maximum square footage of 2,000 square feet, or 75% the square footage of the primary use, whichever is, I believe it's whichever is greater. I'm sorry, one more time, sir. Yes, sir. It would be in Section forty-five, one-ten, parentheses, six.
Mr. Woodward, do you have anything to comment on those, on accessory dwelling units?
Oh, ma'am, thank you.
Thank you. All right, let's move forward. Use of structures.
All right, yep. Now we are in Article Two, Division Four. And we are proposing to add non-residential farm buildings for bona fide farms. This would be in residential zoning districts prior to the establishment of a single-family home. And it's an interesting one. Florida statutes is already going to give this preemption whereby if you have a bona fide agricultural use, regardless of what the zoning is, you are entitled to a non-residential exempt farm building without any permitting requirements. All we can ask for is a site plan to show where it's at on the property. We can't, and I hope not too many people are watching, but we can't enforce setbacks. We can't enforce lot coverage. We can't enforce anything except for FEMA flood hazard. That's it. Moving on, within the same section, forty-five dash one-oh-six, D-four, section was abbreviated, even though all throughout the Land Development Code it is spelled out, so we just changed that to be consistent. Table 2.04A, we've added for accessory dwelling uses, this is units, this is uses that are allowed per zoning district. So we just made it align with the proposed amendment of inclusion of ADUs with the SUP in commercial, same thing, SUP with conforming commercial use. And forty-five, one-ten, supplemental regulations for accessory uses in structures. In subsection one, for accessory equipment, we are proposing an addition of well or pump houses which are less than 60 square feet and less than eight feet in height are permitted in any setback. So, you know, if you need me to elaborate on anything, let me know. I don't want to bog us down too much. In forty-five, one-ten, parentheses, two, I, this is in reference to multiple boathouses. We are adding commas so that it would read unless a special use permit, comma, or development agreement approved by the Board of County Commissioners, comma, allows for more than one boathouse. For the home occupation, which is forty-five, one-ten, seven, B-one, we removed, we changed the font color. For whatever reason, it got adopted as being blue and everything else was black. Within that same section, two, subsection two, we added a period that was missing, and we struck the word premises, which was duplicated for subsection three. For standard conditions in subsection four, we struck use, which was a leftover. And we also removed a period between lot, I'm sorry, we removed a space between the word lot and a period. And because this was already adopted, we couldn't make these scrivener's errors. Moving on, we are in forty-five dash one-thirty-one, which is the code section regulating recreational vehicles as a temporary shelter. We added, under permit not required in residential zoning districts, we added item F, which would be under no circumstance is an RV to be stored, left, or abandoned on a vacant property. Vacant is defined as having no dwelling unit on the property. RVs in violation of this provision will be subject to removal.
I don't agree with that.
Can I voice my displeasure with that one as well?
I don't agree with that. You're trying to overstep your bounds. Man paying his taxes, he ought to be able to park what he wants on his property.
I agree with that. I also agree that we have a large portion of our county of people that enjoy it, enjoy it because of the recreational activities that we have here. We have people from out of county, out of state, out of country practically that come here to enjoy our natural resources. And if they're put in a position where they can own a vacant piece of property and park a camper, even if they're only staying in it for two weeks a year, and they are from out of town, they should not be required to have to remove that from the lot while they are not present. So...
I agree.
Rest my displeasure with that section of changes.
Okay.
As a matter of fact, I would even go so far as, on the next page, where they're limiting the days that those RVs are allowed to be on the lot to be extended well beyond the 60 days and 14 days consecutive. I think that's a gross misuse of our resources here.
I agree.
Be that as it may, so when the motion comes, you're, with whatever you approve or deny, you're, it would be with?
Exception.
The exception of...
Okay.
These two items.
All right. Is it possible to change verbiage in other sections, or we're just going based off of what you guys have presented for change? While we're at it.
So it's...
I mean, our, one of the things we've been tasked with is beating this Land Development Code up over the course of however many years now.
Oh, it's constant.
We want to talk about them. Or do we just let you come back with it at another time? How?
We beat it up all the time.
Well, and where I'm going with that, number four on the next page, let's see, this would be Section forty-five, one-sixty-four.
Can we?
Section four, line D. Extend of the state, RV does not exceed 14 consecutive days and 60 non-consecutive days in a given calendar year. Let's correct that or do something else with it. And that verbiage shows up in some of those other places, some of those other sections, too.
Well, I know down where I live. And this, some of it's been going on commercially for a long time, and others of it cropped up during the COVID period. People are resorting to living in RVs because they can't afford traditional housing. And economically, our community is not the best in the world. And I think we've got to be a little bit more lenient on people in RVs in this day and age because they just can't afford anything else. I do know people that literally have to live in a camper. And I've also seen campers down our way that have nice little shelters built over them so they won't be subject to the beating rain. Some of them are on property that has been rented out for RV use for years, and nobody said anything about it. So...
I had a case where a gentleman was disabled, living in a RV. The county went out, made him move his RV. He lived in a tent for about four months. And then he finally could, saved up enough money, he could put a utility shed on it, and he built a bed in that. Now, you tell me what's right about that. Nothing. We run him out of an RV, disabled man, and put him in a tent. He lived there for four months in a tent, because I had a toilet for him.
I think code enforcement's got enough teeth to, you know, as long as something's not maintained, you know, it's maintained in a disorderly fashion, there's plenty of avenues to address stuff without giving them more leverage to beat up on the income folks in the county.
They can go out there and work on that 207 deal.
Yeah, yeah.
I also wonder if we don't need to have some provision for an RV that's going to be a dwelling place to be permitted, making sure that they...
I don't think we need to go as far as condoning that. I think there needs to be a, if you're going to live in a RV, I think there needs to be an air of, I need to keep it in order so that I don't bring the heat down. I think there needs to be that little bit of hanging over your head there just to keep people in compliance and not let the stuff get run down and not let unpermitted additions and stuff get built on. As soon as we condone living in a camper, that's going to open up a whole can of worms, in my opinion. But I do think we need to be relaxed in how we view those that can only afford to exist in those kinds of situations.
Totally on board, but I also see a little bit different side because with code, it's very black and white, what can be removed, when, there are like, all this. So I've seen other areas, and I'm just throwing this out there for, whatever. If it's an RV, it's got to maybe something, it functions as an RV. It can be moved, it's tagged, it's whatever. To your point, about 14 or 60 days, who in the world, we don't have, there's not enough staff in the world to go around and...
No, me neither.
To me, that's kind of silly, but it's not necessarily the agenda right now. But I'm just going out there for conversation. Could a happy medium be something that, if you're going to live in an RV, or whatever, it still is an RV. It's not grown into the ground and...
Well, it needs to be tagged like a mobile home. You know, a mobile home, if you're going to, if it's going to remain a mobile home and not become a permanent picture, then it's required to have a registration sticker every year. And likewise, anything you pull behind the truck or drive has to have up-to-date licensure. So it seems the no-brainer direction for that is, as long as it actively has a tag, and then it, you know, it is functioning. I mean, I've seen a bunch of mobile homes that I wouldn't live in, but they maintain the sticker on them, and some people don't mind living in them. But at the same time, as long as they go through the motions of maintaining that registration, whether it be for a mobile home, or RV, or a pull-behind camper, or, that shows the, that shows the intent of keeping it up, in my opinion. In my opinion.
Maybe that's a
And I think that section C, they're lawfully connected to appropriate electrical wells, sewer septic. I know of a situation out in Houdal Ridge where they were running power cords and sewer lines to a central person who was willing to let them dump into their, and pull their power and dump off their, into their sewer septic tanks, so.
Well, again, that falls back to code enforcement. Code enforcement's got teeth to solve that, regardless of what the RV ordinance says, you know what I mean? So, you can call an electrical non-compliance issue out without having to say it's because of the RV. You can call, you can call a, a health department issue, a septic, a septic tank issue out via the health department, without saying it's the fault of the RV being parked there.
I, I personally would like to see section D struck.
Can you be more specific?
The extend of the stay for an RV does not exceed fourteen consecutive days or sixty non-consecutive days. I would rather see that whole section struck.
I don't know which one we're
We're on, um,
Hey.
Four, no, permit not required.
Well, it shows up in a couple of sections. It shows up in
Yeah, wherever it shows up, I would
Forty-five, one-eighty-five, four delta.
Yep.
It's, uh, forty-one, or forty-five dash one-thirty-one, paragraph four, D.
I think that's about right.
And it also shows up in two C on, uh, whatever this one is, let's see here.
Also, or just so you're referencing, this was actually given to us by our magistrate, that he wanted this more concrete. So he asked, uh, to have this more concrete because
Good for him, they can bring the hammer down, yeah.
So they didn't, because they did not feel what we're able to do right now would justify, um,
Good for him.
And so that's what he's asked for, uh, and that's what we're bringing to you, so.
Thank you.
That's what that was asked from our magistrate during, um, our codes magistrate meetings.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
Yeah, no, we, we, we appreciate y'all's work on it. We understand that y'all aren't sitting back there wringing your hands, making these rules up.
Madam Chair.
But when stuff jumps out at us.
Um, there's one thing I'd like to just mention, following up with what Mr. Helms had to say. I think that what we're seeing on these proposed amendments is because our code enforcement officers are finding uh, there are more and more, uh, I don't know how you say, dilapidated. They're not tagged, or they're not capable of habitation, sitting on vacant lots.
Well, I think part of it was like the vehicle that the sheriff's office found on the side of a lot, Old Samatea Road, uh, didn't have an engine. It had been towed there and dumped.
Right. Well, that's one of their problems. And there's also some things in our code that, uh, and I think we may come across them where you may have numerous, um, you may have numerous RVs on your property, but even if they're all, uh, you, they can't be used for anything. And they're not used, I mean, they're just sitting there. They're dilapidated and abandoned, whatever. You can't even take them all off the property because we have codes saying you can only take so many. And so what they, that's one of the things they're trying to cover here, is have something in our code where they can get these, um, you know, yeah, just like it says, uh, you can't store the, but it doesn't really specify that they're these dilapidated ones, but, but that's, that's the thought behind it. Trying to get rid of the ones that aren't inhabited, can't be inhabited.
So why can't we say that if it's registered, current registration, I mean, can we go that route?
That would require a cost on the part of the owner, so.
Well, well, that's, that's part of ownership. That's same, same difference as owning a car and driving it back and forth to work. I mean, that's, I don't, I don't see that as the issue. Obviously, it would require a revamping of a couple of these code sections to include that, that thing. But there's, but my, I understand code enforcement wanting to have the leverage to clean up. But at the same time, I don't know that we should penalize those that are keeping their stuff up because, for the negligence of those that don't. And we've abandoned and tore down two RVs this week off of vacant property. So, I mean, it's not, it's not that it's not unheard of. And there is, there is a piece of the public that does not mind doing that because there, there's, it's like scrap money. It's like scrap metal. There, there's, there's small bits and pieces of money that, for people that don't mind putting a little elbow grease into remodeling those. But I do understand that there are a lot of dilapidated. Most people that let one run into the ground don't think about cleaning their property up and buying a new one. They just park the new one next to the old one.
Right.
And let it fall apart. So I understand, I understand that portion of it, but at the same time, I, I tend to think we should err on the side of not penalizing those that are doing it right for the sake of those that aren't.
Sure. I, I, I think, hopefully, the board will recall or see that we're talking about section forty-five, one-thirty-one, which is recreational vehicle as temporary shelter.
Say that again, Josh.
This. I didn't hear you. Section forty-five dash one-three-one, recreational vehicle as temporary shelter.
Well, again, we can't, we can't condone people living in it permanently, but we could, for the same reason that Sheriff's Office doesn't enforce, doesn't sit out there and run radar all the time. Like, we, so, if code enforcement does selective enforcement of what they do within provide some relief and, you know, not, not beat down on those that are lesser.
Under that section two, where the permit's not required, and my two bookends here, um, talk about the, under no circumstances is an RV to be stored, left, or abandoned. Can we take out stored and left and just say abandoned on vacant property?
So subjective. I mean, what's abandoned?
Well, you further define it. Not having, well, not having anyone living in it. Uninhabitable.
I mean, I think
The other issue
Break the whole thing and call it unregistered.
I mean, the other, the other issue or point that I'd like to make is if you're storing a recreational vehicle on a piece of property, that would be considered open storage of a recreational vehicle, which would be permitted in the C-three zoning district. So the whole intent with this, this section of the code was to provide a method by which somebody could reside in a mobile home, or a recreational vehicle while they were making improvements to their property, or while they were working on a property to get it into compliance, or they're having their house built, or they're clearing the trees so that they can build a house on there. And it's been so misconstrued and interpreted vastly over the time that it's been in its inception, that it's kind of become this free-for-all. If it were me, I'd get rid of it altogether and say, you can't live in an RV whenever you're building your house. Rent somewhere. But I mean, I know that our community would go nuts over that.
All your examples just, just ended with, as you're trying to build a house, clearing property to build a house, to build a house. There's a lot of people that don't have any intention of building a house. And they, you know, and, and again, I'm going to refer back to my, my recreational use, my, you know, the, the recreational side of what Putnam County has here to offer. There's a lot of people that, that aren't interested in building a house on their one-acre piece, or their half-acre piece. They're interested in coming down here during the cold months and enjoying Ako Waha, enjoying the St. John's River, and enjoying these, the, these outdoor activities that we have and are blessed to have. But they have zero intention of building a house. And that's, you know, there, there, there should be accommodations for that, and them not be penalized for, you know, having that, the ability to, to come and enjoy our, our resources. And bring, bring their tax dollars and, you know, shop, shop at our local, our local places and eat out at our local restaurants and bring that, bring that outside money in, even though, even though, yeah, they're still paying, you know, they're still paying property taxes until hopefully our governor, Will, gets rid of property taxes, but. Yep. Um, as of right now, that, that one-acre piece of vacant property that just has the RV that gets used a couple of months out of the year is still paying taxes. They're still coming down, you know what I mean? So, I think with, with all the, with all the focus on being, how do we clean this bad part up? And how do we do this? And how do we get leverage to, to make these people be compliant? I think, I think a lot of what we're missing is, it's, it's the whole, trying to taking guns away from, from, from law-abiding citizens, you know what I mean? Because bad people have guns. It's kind of the same thing with, with some of the rules that we're trying to put in place in that the people that are doing it right are the, ultimately, the ones that are going to be getting punished. And, and nine times out of ten, they're the ones that will come down to code enforcement when they get a letter and try to clarify, hey, I'm, look, I'm doing this, or hey, I'm doing that. I, I had no intention of being non-compliant, but I didn't know because you passed a rule that said I can only stay here fourteen days, and I'm down for three months, being a snowbird. Like, like, those people are the ones that care about compliance. The one in the dilapidated trailer, they don't care that you send them a notice every six months. And until the county has enough money to come get it, they're just going to keep living there. So, I, I think we're adversely affecting the people that we shouldn't be adversely affecting. And the ones that we want to
Penalize.
Kind of penalize, don't care that we're penalizing them anyway.
Well, and, and to one of your points that you made in terms of, you know, they're coming down here and spending their tax dollars here. That's another part of it. I mean, if there's a mobile home on one piece of property being assessed as a real piece of property at twenty-six hundred dollars a year, and right next door is a RV with six children and two family members that are not paying any property taxes, negligible, seventy-five bucks a year, but because it's vacant. Those kids are in our school system. They're using our trash services. They're calling paramedics.
We're not going to do that. We're not going to, we're not going to put that into the language of the code ever, in my opinion. I don't see, I don't see avenue where that will ever occur, where they can say, you can live year-round in RV. Not, not the people won't do it, because those will. But I, I would imagine that, that the people that you, the, the six-kid family that you described right there are not the norm. They are the anomaly, whereas the people that want to enjoy.
Well, I can see that, I'm not interested in having an argument. We're only about, you know, twenty-five percent of the way through this, this whole shindig. It sounds as though kind of the consensus of this board is to not include this language, although it was brought to us by our code enforcement officers that are burdened by this situation.
Want the hammer.
But if we, if we do end up moving forward and ideally get that approval on everything else, it would be except for the addition to forty-five dash one-thirty-one. Madam Chair, is, is that an appropriate way to request that approval?
I think so. And my concern is
They're written up.
The time, you know, the time constraints in item C, um, fourteen days and sixty days consecutive, or non-consecutive. I think we do have situations, we've got to be, got to deal with some compassion here.
Well, keep in mind, this section is for temporary occupancy, so there's got to be some way to define temporary.
But that's the permits not required.
That would be permit not required. That is, I got a piece of property with a house on it, and my family wants to come down. They drive their RV. They're staying on their way to Disney. They can be there for no more than fourteen.
Right.
How, how come, how come that's not consistent with the, with the RV park section? You know, the RV park section allows for ninety days consecutive or up to a hundred and twenty days non-consecutive throughout the year. How come, how come that, how come that liberty doesn't extend to people that own their RVs that don't have them parked in a park? Which seems, like, I, I understand the RV park, like, limitation, um, but it seems to me that there, there should be an alignment there between what we're trying to make average John Q. citizen do versus what we make in tourists in a RV park. It seems like, worst-case scenario, it should be the same. Best-case scenario, you know, local people should get a little more
Leniency.
Relaxation on that. And so, at, at minimum, I would say we should change it to the RV park standard, ninety and one-twenty.
And that's a fair point that you bring up for the RV parks. But RV parks are, are, are regulated further by Florida Department of Health. And that's actually a statutory requirement that those ninety-day and one-hundred-and-twenty-day terms of stay are imposed.
Got you.
So, I mean, if, if that's the direction that this commission wants to recommend to the Board of County Commissioners, I don't have an RV, right? I don't have a dog in that fight.
I do.
But we, but we
Got a bus.
We, we, we came from that. Um, I, I can't remember, but when we amended the, the land development code back in twenty-twenty-four, it was longer durations of temporary stay. And our direction at that point in time was, we need to rein it in a little bit and make it a shorter temporary stay.
We did this in twenty-twenty-four?
Yes, ma'am. England, Tim's and Miller was our contractor.
Right.
And they did the entire land development code. And that's when we got the ADC and we changed up accessory dwellings.
I don't remember this being an amendment during that. I thought the only amendment during that particular time was the ADC.
Oh, no, they, I mean, it was, it was three hundred and sixty-eight pages of changes.
That was See, because it's, you go right back in the ag section there, in section three, and it goes back to ninety consecutive days and a hundred and eighty non-consecutive days. Permit not required.
That was, that was what it used to say. And I'll, I'll add
That's what it still says. That's what it says right there. Um, so.
Yes, yes, with, in the ag zoning district.
In the ag zoning district, yeah.
Correct. I believe it was, uh, for the, uh, for the residential districts, it was fourteen consecutive and ninety non-consecutive. And with that, I'll add, with this amendment in twenty-twenty-four, we added item six, which is the, the last restriction in that code, that section, which says, no permanent use allowed. Under no circumstance will an RV be permitted to serve as a permanent shelter or housing solution within any zoning district. An RV shall not be attached in any way to a permanent foundation or other structure, and shall not have any permanent connections to utilities.
I'm absolutely cool with that. I, like I said, I'm, I'm absolutely cool with the provisions of not allowing permanent residential use. Cool with that. But for temporary use, or vacational use, or seasonal use, there needs to be an allowance more than two weeks and
I can tell you, there's a lot of violation of that code. Um.
So I understand that, as we've discussed, we don't, we being the board collectively, we don't want this addition of the stored, left, or abandoned on a vacant piece of property in either zoning district.
Abandoned would stay in.
So you, we would
I would just take out stored and left. Abandons a whole different can of worms. You abandon something, you let it go to trash. You never revisit it. You can store something, like if Justin wanted to store his bus on a lot that he owns, and he's keeping that bus up, and he's using it regularly, I, that's a different can of worms.
Yeah, but they're, they're, but they're back to how you define that. They're, they're coming at it from a code enforcement standpoint, standpoint, going, how do I define that so that I can write somebody a ticket?
From a, from a legal standpoint.
Yeah, you gotta have that.
Yeah, like I said, I think, I think the verbiage should include registered. I think that, I think that, I think that's a clear line of delineation. And it, it, it sets forth that you either intend to keep it as an RV, or you don't. And at that point, when a code enforcement goes on, on site, and it's an unregistered vehicle, that's just a derelict thing that they can haul off if they so choose.
Would a better language be, under no circumstances is an unregistered RV?
There you go.
I have a question, though. Can I get a registration for an RV if the tires are flat and the windows are busted and the HVAC system doesn't work?
Yeah, well, I mean, now you're talking about a condition, but i- if, if the windows are busted and, and you
Yes.
spend the money to get the registration, then yeah, so be it. But that's, that's the line of delineation, not
Shouldn't have
not, not the code's official that goes out there and is making a subjective determination on it, and which can very well depend on their relationship to the owner. You know, that's what happens, is you get two neighbors arguing out there. The, the, the code enforcement there shouldn't be out there to be the judge and jury. They should be able to go out there with a line of texts going, well, that RV is registered. They're within their rights. Or it's not registered, we will administer termination and maybe ultimately have it removed. But there's a, there's a clear, there's a clear line, from a code enforcement standpoint, or a law enforcement standpoint, or how you want to look at it, there's a clear line that determines your, instead of having these vague determinations about vacant or unused or two weeks, because then you're going, you say, you say it can't be there for two weeks. Well, now what you're doing is, you're getting the neighbor over there with their camera phone, taking pictures on July third, and then two weeks later, they're taking, well, that thing may have gone and come back, nobody knows, but they're going to present the evidence in the code enforcement. Look, it was parked there on the third, and it was parked there on the third of the next month. It's been there longer. We need to do something about it, regardless of whether it moved or not. So, I think, and I, you know, this is, this, I'm not, obviously, y'all, this has hit, hit someone with a hook for me. But, and so I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to cast dispersion on anybody, but I think that, I think in the grand scheme of things here, the, the fact that we can push forward a clear, a clear line of, a clear delineation between what is and isn't allowed by source of registration and up to allowed by source of registration and up-to-date registration makes it easier on everybody.
Because most people that have the windows busted out and tires flat are not going to go spend the money and have a registration.
They're not going to spend the 75 bucks or whatever it is every year to get the sticker read, dude.
So if it has a current tag.
So, I hear you guys. Can I, can I get a, can I get an exactation of what you'd like? Or can we press forward and circle back at the end of the meeting?
The, the, the exact verbiage would be adding unregistered in front of, in front of your, your nomenclature you got there for abandoned vehicles. By, by, by putting the word unregistered in front of it,
Under no circumstances.
You allow registered vehicles to be not addressed by that line.
There you go.
I think that's to put unregistered in there.
Under no circumstances is an RV
An unregistered
Unregistered RV to be stored.
Just insert that word.
Unregistered four RV.
Yeah.
That solves a whole host of problems. And we can move forward. Zach?
Okay. All right. So just to clarify, because I'm going to amend my report to the B O C C. It would say, under no circumstances is an unregistered RV to be stored, left or abandoned?
Mm-hmm.
That is correct.
And then the rest of the text as is.
Yep. Are we going to do anything about the extent of stay?
And everything else would stay.
Are we going to do anything about the extent of stay? I'm asking you all.
And so is everybody on board with making the extent of stay to be 90 and 120 for both residential and agricultural districts?
Which is consistent with the RV.
Mm-hmm.
I'm good.
Okay.
Cool.
Good job, guys.
Mr. Woodward, do you have any comment on this?
No, ma'am.
Thank you.
We are painfully dredging forward.
Yeah, we're moving forward.
Now, I do want to clarify because the ag zoning district where permits are not required is 90 consecutive and 180 non-consecutive. So in residential, we want it to be 90 and 120?
Well, I just, 90 and 120 is, I believe, isn't that consistent with RV park?
Ooh.
Or is it 90 and 180? I'd like to see it, I'd like to see it consistent across the board, but
Yep.
However, I mean, I just
I don't have the RV park section in, in this packet.
All right. Let's call it all 90 and 180 to make, match up with the ag. Suits me.
Board, board's happy there?
180 or 189?
It's 180.
180.
So it'd be 90 and 180 for any temporary term of stay?
Not, permit not required.
Yeah. Then you don't have to argue over what, what zoning it's in, too.
And so just to be clear, we are going to amend 140, I'm sorry, 45-131-2C?
Yes.
And we would also amend 145-131-4D?
Yes.
No, and 2E? Or 2, yeah, 2F?
2F and 35.
Right, 2F. Yeah, I'm, I'm past that one.
He's already passed that.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah. We got that. We got that.
We were talking about the day adjustment.
Okay. All right.
So, so it's just those two. 2C and 4D.
Yes.
You good, Ashley? All right. Moving right along.
Ashley, this is a great introduction to this board, isn't it? We're sorry.
Moving along with great speed.
And here I thought I was going to make it to a 5:30 soccer game.
Yeah. You're an hour late.
All right. And then just for consistency here, 45-131-3B6 will say, under no circumstances is an unregistered RV to be stored, left or abandoned as presented.
Right.
Yes. Unregistered being the key word.
All right. For artificial ponds, we are proposing to strike out language requiring an approval by the Putnam Soil and Water Conservation District for ponds established for bona fide agricultural purposes in the ag, ag estate and mining districts being exempt from the design standards of the pond. Under C4 of the same section, we are including, existing and proposed residential structures and accessory structures shall conform to waterfront principal building setbacks of the applicable zoning district as measured from the top of bank of the artificial pond. And we are setting a maximum depth of up to 25 feet.
How, how are they going to determine top of the bank and not water level? Have, I mean, is there?
When they, when they would provide us a site plan, they would show what's the highest elevation around that pond. That's your top of bank.
All right.
What is the goal of, of that? I can understand wetland protection. I can understand all the other things. What, what's, what's the driver saying I can't dig a pond next to my cabin or whatever? I mean, what's, what was the basis of this 25 feet requirement?
Well, well, the, the setback would be whatever the principal building setback is per zoning district. And in many cases, it's 50 feet.
Right. So, well, I guess I'll just phrase that. If I build an auxiliary, accessory unit, I build a little cabin, which I'm in my rights to, I'm just, I'm just wondering why I couldn't have my little cabin over my little pond or what?
Sure. So, I mean, in Putnam County, I mean, we've got, we've got 10, 12 acre ponds that are artificial. Those are, those are lakes, you know, where I'm from.
And there's been a waterfront setback from all of the waters, I think, with the exception of man-made ponds, right? Like any creek or river or body of water, we already have an aquatic setback. This is
Yes, we do.
So a man-made pond would be the only thing that so far that doesn't have it.
That's correct. And ultimately, I mean, we don't want somebody to build, you know, or put a mobile home next to their pond and that pond, something happened calamity, once in a lifetime, that mobile home drops down in the pond.
No, I was really looking for the basis.
Okay. Moving on, in subsection D of that section, we are specifying that a site work permit application is required for an artificial pond.
Site work, meaning through the county, through public works?
It's applied through by the building and, building department and approved by Public Works.
Yep.
Continuing on, 45-186, mobile home park. Most of the revisions within this section are just making it consistent, the capitalization of manufactured home park, MHP, some were lowercase, some were uppercase. But we've also included striking a requirement that says striking must be submitted to the Public Works Department. Approval of the design and implementation of the plan must be obtained from Public Works. This is in reference to a drainage plan. Mobile home parks, manufactured home parks go through DRC. At that point in time, St. John's River Water Management District has to weigh in on the, the storm water retention. Public, excuse me, Public Works has to approve the design standards of the, the stormwater ponds. And then a site work permit has to be issued for the, the construction of the site. Just below that, we're striking item 10 altogether, which would be emergency storm shelters shall be provided as required by article 10 of this code. With that, previous items 11, 12, 13, 14, 15 become 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, doing away with 10. As we flip through the pages, we find ourselves in table 7.02A, dimensional requirements per zoning district. In the residential two zoning district, for whatever reason, the impervious surface was approved at 70%. We just want to ring that back end to 50 to be aligned with all of the other single-family zoning districts. Next, we will find ourselves at section 45-611. And this is where Mr. Woodward's going to want to come back up. We are striking a sentence that stated, they are further categorized into major collectors and minor collectors. Within our land development code, we had no threshold for what a major or minor collector was, not vehicles traveled, lane width, road type, county road, state road. None, not, there was no identifiable parameter by which staff could say that's a major or minor. The only place major, minor collector shows up in any of our 500 pages of legislation is map series three in the comprehensive plan, which was provided to us by Kim Lee Horn from FDOT Data. The following amendments to section 45-616 were requested specifically by the county engineer from the Public Works Department. These changes, as I understand it, more or less align with current material types for culverts. So in B2 for cross drains, it would read, if approved, all cross drain pipes shall be constructed or reinforced concrete or high-performance polypropylene unless otherwise approved by the Public Works Director.
I want to back up just a minute. Michael, did you want to come up and talk about the collector roads? Let's, let's not get too far ahead of ourselves.
Yes, ma'am. Mostly I just don't want to disappoint Mr. Baker, who's been eagerly anticipating my having something to say on this. And I'm not going to say much. This is a technical discussion that Mr. Baker and I had. Given that there is a map that's part of the comprehensive plan that does distinguish between major, major and minor collectors, it, you know, it just struck me as a little odd that we're doing away with that distinction in the land development code. But, you know, that's a technical issue. We don't need to get wrapped up around that axle as far as I'm concerned. This, this is nowhere near the level of concern that I have about the idea of doing away with the requirement for special use permits for emergency services facilities.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is this the place where we need to go back and amend that comp plan? That map on the comp plan? Can our GIS system do that for us?
It would require an amendment to the comprehensive plan, which is
That has to go to county.
State coordinated review. There is an expedited, but it is a, it's, it's process. We can amend the map.
Does the LDC have to go to the state?
No, ma'am. The land development code does not go to the state.
Okay. Just so we have a note somewhere in the master copy that this is a discrepancy between the two? So if somebody comes up and wants to know what's a minor collector, we don't just stutter?
And so for what it's worth, the map in the comprehensive plan is correct. It's just we don't define any parameters by which what a minor or a major collector are. So by referencing, and it's, it's worth noting, too, that that section simply says these are referred to as major or minor collectors. So it's not even really providing, I'm sorry, further categorized into major or minor collectors. So it's talking about roadway classification. This is where we would anticipate seeing what that distinction is. It just simply says collector roads are roadways providing service for relatively moderate traffic volumes, moderate trip lengths and moderate operating speeds. Collector roads collect and distribute traffic between local roads and arterial roads. They are further categorized into major collectors and minor collectors, which is proposed to be struck. Examples in Putnam County include, and I'm sure this is but not limited to, County Road 21, County Road 28, County Road 209, County Road 216, County Road 219, County Road 308, County Road 309, County Road 310 and County Road 315.
Sounds pretty complete.
Well, in reading that, I mean, it's saying examples in Putnam County include examples of
Yeah.
Major collectors or minor collectors, example of collector roads. I mean, that's, you know, how, how are we reading that?
It would be, it would, because that, the prior sentence that is struck was a, a complete sentence, it would be examples of collector roads in Putnam County are.
I got you. Okay.
Okay.
All right.
As we continue along, still in six, section 45-618, the amendment to table 7.10K, approved pipe material. We've got galvanized corrugated steel pipe or arch. And we are striking bit, stick with me, bituminous coated corrugated steel. And then further down to corrugated high-density polypropylene pipe, we are adding side drain only. And then in addition to that, we are adding corrugated high-performance polypropylene.
Can I make a suggestion for the next rewrite about this one?
Bigger print?
Why not just for roadway drainage and pipe materials and all the others, say, per the FDOT drainage manual and approved products list? You, you can wipe out three pages here and not keep doing this. The reason I bring that up is for everybody, there's two state bills going through that's going to require all drainage to be constructed to FDOT standards. Anyway, if they go through, it's a bunch of rewrites. But in the future, I think you could really tighten this up.
I'll pass that information along to our Public Works Department.
Yeah. It'd make everybody's life a lot easier, especially if you want
Yeah, no doubt. As we move on, for section 45-636, the section is use of easements for driveway access. We are adding the word shared in the following sentence. A recorder, a recorded easement may be used for shared driveway access serving up to two residential dwelling units, provided the driveway meets the following standards, so on and so forth. And then at the end of this section, we are adding a restriction, which is as follows. Restriction, in any event, when three or more residential units are accessed by easement, the access shall conform to design standards for private roads as stipulated by article seven, division 10. Next up, in section 45-797, previously approved developments, we are, are making a switch from 35 to 30. And for the entire context, it would be, the director of Public Works may, after a field inspection of the applicable rights of way, adjust any of the dimensional requirements shown in illustration 9.1 in accordance with the best possible engineering under the conditions of a given roadway. But in no case will the director of Public Works be able to approve a right of way that is less than 30 feet in width unless the development served by that right of way is specifically vested by the Board of County Commissioners under section 45-801 of this code.
Sounds good.
Just to bring it into compliance with something, some other code or?
No, sir. The issue is, is we've got a lot of antiquated subdivisions with 30-foot right of ways. And people want to obtain a right of way use permit to clear, grade, stabilize, so on and so forth, the road. And the only thing stopping them is a petition to the Board of County Commissioners to come in and ask for a five-foot reduction. Moving on in 45-836, this is an amendment to some of the requirements from the ADC inclusion that we went through. So we are proposing to strike, the applicant shall provide to the department the name and contact information, i.e. address and phone number for all abutting property owners that will be impacted by the deviation. We're proposing to get rid of that because as part of our staff's notification
Yeah.
Process, we do that on their behalf. In subsection 13, nothing's changing in terms of the amount of setback reductions that are possible. We're just trying to clean up the language so that it is easier to understand. So it would read, front yard reductions up to 20 feet so long as 10 foot of separation is maintained between the structure and the property line. Side yard reductions up to 15 feet so long as three foot of separation is maintained between structure and property line. Rear yard reductions up to 15 feet so long as three foot of separation is maintained between the structure and the property line and there is no water body. And then the, the section, I'm sorry, the appendix nine that is referenced at the bottom of that page, it does call back to that section 45-797 with the, the switch from 35 to 30. In this case, we are simply adding for ingress and egress access that is less than 30 foot in width unless approved, unless the development served by that right of way is specifically vested by the Board of County Commissioners under 45-801 of this code. And then we are also adding, in all cases in which a new right of And then we are also adding, in all cases in which a new right-of-way access is proposed, such right-of-way shall conform to Article ten, I'm sorry, Article seven, Division ten. So we're making it easier for someone to utilize an antiquated platted right-of-way, but in the event that they are creating a new right-of-way, they have to conform to our current design standards. In forty-five eight eighty-six, this is referencing membership of the Development Review Committee. We are striking entirely what was added back in July, and we are replacing it with what was in place at the time of the amendment, which elaborates specifically who's a voting member of the DRC, who's a non-voting member of the DRC. In forty-five nine sixty-one, we're striking this code, which was a leftover. And forty-five one thousand one, we're getting rid of, I think it was a period that was an overhang. And, and further down, forty-five one oh one, so one D, between D and E, we removed the period. For H, we had to change the formatting of the document so that it would align correctly. We also struck out this coddle out of that last section. For section forty-five ten thirty-two, scope of section, this is referencing subdivisions, any type of subdivision from a lot split up to a plat. We just further defined what a lot of record is, and then we added language indicating legally conforming parcels that existed prior to July one, twenty twenty-four. And forty-five ten thirty-three, subsection five, we're proposing to change the name of the exempt subdivision to boundary line adjustments, just so it's easier for folks to grasp what exactly an exempt subdivision is. And forty-five ten forty-seven, we made a change to subsection A one. It had forty-five ten forty-four, and we are making it forty-five ten sixty-four to align with that section which discusses vacations of subdivisions. Also in that section, in the event that a vesting determination is the only path to success, rather than it being a vesting determination by the Board of County Commissioners, we would allow the Administrative Deviation Committee to hear that vesting determination initially.
Is that a meeting that's open to the public?
Sir?
Would that be a meeting open to the public?
Yes, sir, it is. We send notices to the surrounding property owners.
Do you meet regularly, or just as needed?
So we meet regularly. It was intended to be as needed, but we identified the first and the third Tuesday of every month. So we're never conflicting with the Board of County Commissioners, and we're always meeting right after the Development Review Committee.
Who would make the determination where it goes to the Board of County Commission or the Administrative Review Committee?
Good question. So during my tenure here, we had a pretty contentious vesting determination that when the previous code was in place, it went straight to the board. Planning Commission didn't hear it. And at that point in time, the board requested that we set a density limitation of, if it's more than four units per acre being vested, then it would go to Planning Commission and to the board. So in the event that we had to make the decision, we would leverage the decision on that previous finding.
Is that clearly stated? Or would that be...
I...
The reason I ask is because there's a big difference going before the county commission and staff level.
Yes, sir.
I'm reviewing that soon.
Yes, sir. So if I can give you an anecdote, most of our vesting determinations are because I own ten acres, I split off three acres to give to someone or to sell to someone. That person owns the land, and then I own mine. I don't want to sell the rest of it so that they can combine it back. I don't want, I can't go through a platted subdivision. It's three acres on the county road that's got services and yada, yada. And you want to build, but you can't build because I sold you three acres of the land. That is the vesting determinations that we see.
But are there any specific criteria that would put a case before ZBOA or the planning com, be ZBOA rather than the ADC?
It wouldn't be ZBOA. It would be the Board of County Commissioners.
Okay. But for some things, I thought ADC was doing special use permits, too, aren't you?
Yes, ma'am. So the ADC does special use permits, variances, and vesting determinations.
So are there specific criteria that tell you which goes to where?
Yes, ma'am. So within the land development code, if it says specifically that the ZBOA has to approve the special use permit, which would be communication towers in borrow areas, they go straight to ZBOA. With variances, it's that threshold of setback reductions, which we recently covered. For vestings, it would be if it's a density greater than four units per acre. And with that being said, that would be limited more or less to those antiquated subdivisions from eighteen eighty to nineteen sixty.
But in all events, the determination of the deviation committee can be appealed to the county commissioners, correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
So when the ADC...
That's the, the safety net there is, if people don't like your decision, then it can come before the board.
Right. Well, and to be more specific, if the ADC chooses to defer, it goes to the ZBOA. And if the ADC denies, the appeal goes to the ZBOA. At any point in time, if it's at the ZBOA, the B O C C can pull it to them.
How about in the event that you guys make an approval, but let's say a neighbor disagreed with it, can they appeal that to the...
They would appeal that to the ZBOA, and at that point, any commissioner can pull it to the B O C C.
So it's taken away the possibility for litigation on a decision? Sort of.
Not necessarily. I mean, if the B O C C pulls it for a vesting determination, it would be done through a resolution, but that resolution could be contested in circuit court for up to thirty days.
Okay.
All right, we're almost there.
We are almost there. In section forty-five ten fifty-one, review by Planning and Development Services, this is referencing a lot split. We're proposing something that's pretty helpful to our constituency, and that would be, at the time of submittal, except for type one subdivision, subject to Florida Statute Chapter one seven seven, any application for any type of subdivision may include a signed document from any professional surveyor and mapper certified in the state of Florida, other than the surveyor or surveying firm that prepared the survey depicting the proposed subdivision, verifying that the map and legal descriptions are correct. And I battled trying to put this language in there in a concise manner. But if you will, if Mr. Morris wants to do a lot split, and your surveyor draws everything out, your only option right now is to submit to the county, and the county surveyor review your proposed lot split. And that could be a four-week process. What we're proposing here is, Mr. Hancock is also a surveyor, doesn't work with your surveyor, doesn't work at the surveying firm as your surveyor. Mr. Hancock can look at it and say, yeah, Joe's survey's good. Here's a letter saying I agree with it. That way, we've got a third party approving that survey and that legal description. We don't get tied up with public works-only surveyor waiting on him to review it. It should make a lot of our administrative subdivisions, which are lot splits, exempt subdivisions, which would be boundary line adjustments, type two, large lot subdivisions, type three family subdivisions, and type four limited residential subdivisions. All of those could be expedited in the sense that you don't have to wait for the county surveyor to review it.
Sounds good. Yeah. Yeah, because he takes a while. I just had...
Didn't mean to pick on you. For section forty-five ten fifty-two, restrictions to a lot split, staff is proposing the addition of a de facto lot split, which would be a parcel that is separated by any street, railway, body of water, or parcel under different ownership. Those two tracts of land can be broken out without having to go through any formal subdivision process. We see it most commonly with a road. The land's been there for longer than State Road nineteen has been there. There's two tracts on either side. Both are of size to build a home, but our land development code limits one home per parcel because it's one parcel. But two tracts, they can't sell off or build or whatever they want to on the other side.
Would this de facto lot split be mandatory in that case? Here's why. Because if you start developing, you need every square foot for your maximum best use. So if it's a de facto split, I own a little piece over there, but that could help me out my density here. So is that in every case, or is that a request?
It would be if you own property that is split by a road, and you want to sell it or build a separate house on it independent of your other house, then you would be able to de facto it out.
I just want to be clear, so that's me as the owner would be...
You have that, you have that extra, extra opportunity, if you will, but you're not required to utilize it.
Would that, would that, would that extend to, say, easements and whatnot? You had an easement to access a piece of property in the bank, and that's...
So it would be a street, and the way that we look at that is any named street. So it could be a private road, which is an easement. So I think that would answer your question.
Okay.
Cruel Avenue is an easement, you know? It's just afforded to us by the...
No, that's my, I was just curious. You know, somebody wants to split a lot, and then you guys say no, then they put a road through the middle of it, and now they get to split a lot.
It would have to put in a road according to Article seven, Division ten.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean...
Yeah, I was just curious.
There's a, there's a long way to do it, for sure, but...
Yeah, yeah.
Submittal of a lot inquiry application and receipt of a lot inquiry response letter is required before a de facto lot split can be processed in order to provide staff an opportunity to review the proposed division to ensure compliance with the land development code and to ensure the split is processed in accordance with this section. So it's a forty-five dollar application. Let staff make sure that there's enough acreage to conform with that zoning district and allow them to proceed. All right, last, last article, Article thirteen definitions. There are a number of slight changes throughout. The first being canals. So we identify and define a canal as a natural or man-made portion of submerged lands which connect to a navigable waterway, provide a habitat for protected species, and are permanent in the sense that massive improvements are required to restore canals to unsubmerged De facto lot split, this is a copy and paste, more or less, but means a parcel separated by a street, railway, body of water, or parcel under different ownership, and is exempt from lot split regulations prescribed in sections forty-five ten fifty-one and forty-five ten fifty-two, as long as both lots meet the minimum lot size for the respective zoning The next one would be a change in the definition of development. A thirteen, we added and/or culvert or other drainage structure. For driveway, we added or easement, so that it finally reads driveway means a prepared path for a vehicle giving ingress and egress from a roadway to an abutty property line And then this is my last sheet. The definition of structure, we changed it from means a thing to means an improvement, constructed or erected on the ground, so on and so forth. And then finally, in the definition for water body, we included canals. And with that, I have completed...
You have. Mr. Woodward, do you have any final summary remarks you'd like to make?
Good job, Zach.
I believe I said my piece. Thank you, ma'am.
You're very welcome, sir. All right. We have gone through the proposed amendments that have been brought before us today. Are we ready to entertain a motion to amend the strikeout underlying additions to Articles two, three, six, seven, nine, eleven, twelve, and thirteen? We can't say that because they're consistent with the comp plan.
Is there a motion?
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept...
Are we, does that include the emergency services provisions of what we were talking about?
Yeah.
We're going to strike those and make them with special use, special use permit requirements?
I think that's what we decided.
So, so the proposal is that an ag, ag estate, residential estate, R one, R two, R three, R four, RMH, CPO, and C one, they would be allowed by right, and we would strike that they're allowed with a special use permit. If there's any of that that you do not agree with, I would just request which one you want to be left alone where it still requires the special use permit.
Do they all require a special use permit as of right now?
As of right now, they all require a special use permit.
Okay. So this is a discussion, I would be inclined to agree with leaving that portion as it is. Like everywhere where it requires a special use permit for emergency services.
So what's the advantage for staff or anyone to have it to where there's not a special use permit required?
Just easier and quicker to do it.
One, yeah, one less step in the bureaucracy, but if they don't do anything in a hurry, so...
Believe it or not, the county is my quickest hustler, man. They're trying to push it as quick as they can, though. And with that, it delays a project for, at minimum, forty-five days.
Yeah.
So as a developer, does that slow them down?
As a developer?
Yeah.
I mean, so emergency services can be public or private. So yes, sir, if you wanted to put up an emergency service center at the end of your neighborhood in an ag zoning district, you would have to go through the special use permit as of right now.
So if we want to lower insurance on our new three hundred home subdivision and need an emergency services building built, that would help us if we could forego the special use permitting?
We could do it quicker. And the other portion of it is, you know, let's not forget that it will go through Development Review Committee, and we will look at the surrounding uses, and we will look at impervious surface coverage and setbacks and so on and so forth. But I think what Mr. Woodward was trying to address is the fact that the public...
The public doesn't have access to any...
I agree.
I agree with that.
I tend to agree that the public needs, needs the ability to voice their opinions on that, even if it does cost the developer a few more days.
Absolutely.
I have one question. So in the future, when we're battling these three, four, eight hundred unit subdivisions coming in, if it's a special use permit requirement, is that going to hinder possibly a require? I mean, if it was by right, would it give whichever board the ability to say, this is where we want this? Because no developer's going to give you that land. That's the worst possible return on its money. And just anecdotally, we ran into the same thing recently, where we had to go through three commissions to fill an emergency room, and it was just a lot of rezoning. So that's, what I'm asking is, if it was by right, would that give future reviewers, whoever, leverage to require that? Or would the FGP, like, be the reason they could never... Or would the FCP like be the reason they could never require it at that point of review?
I don't know that I'm tracking 100% on your question, but I think I can answer it with an example. If Dr. Horton came in and we were short on emergency services, as of right now, there would be some additional time before they could get their certificate of concurrency and go ahead and build that, or start that subdivision.
But what would require them to do that? To provide, development should pay for development. Development should, in my opinion, should benefit the folks that live here. All of a sudden, I heard the other day, there's like 200,000 acres of ag land or something like that in Putnam County. It's not always going to be like that. And as our level, as development takes place, the existing fire departments and rescuers are going to get further and further away. What, what's, if it's a special use permit, they're never going to request that. If it was by, if it was allowed in, with this code change, could planning or someone else require that if it wasn't under the special use permit?
I mean, yes, sir, we could. Right now, the mechanism in place is modification of 9J5, the old school concurrency, whereby we look at cost proportionate fair share agreement, and if your impact is going to result in a 55% stress on our emergency services, then you give us 55% of what the new structure would be. And that's, that is nothing to do with entitlements of the zoning district, or can it be placed there, or special use permit, or anything like that. That's, that would be the requirement. I don't know if that answers your question, though.
No, well, yes. I'm just trying to figure out. So they pay us money, but then we still can't get the land.
Well, yeah, that's the, the next part, is locating that land which is identified as the best possible place for that emergency services facility. And that kind of goes back to the point that Mr. Woodward was bringing up. Whenever the county is in need of a new emergency services facility, we're not going to go buy the cheapest, smallest piece of property that we can to put that facility on. We're going to do our research and study where is that facility needed in the community. And then from there, you know, you'll drop a pinpoint and then a radii and say, "Okay, you know, this is our property options." It's a tricky one to gamble with. When you really get down to it, right, I was looking at the health, safety, and welfare of the community, and more emergency services, more opportunities for that, lower insurance rates, so on and so forth. But I had not considered whether or not it would appease, you know, the public, or if they'd have an interest in, say, in where it should go, or how it would affect, you know, large-scale growth coming into the county. I mean, that's uncharted waters for Putnam County.
But at the same time, if they're looking to build a fire department, you're looking at seven acres, five, seven acres, something like that for all the structure. I mean, you can build smaller, but in a county setting, you're going to look for EMS, police, sheriff's department, probably.
Well, in the grand scheme of those things, you know, the fire station doesn't pop up overnight. They'll spend, they'll spend over a year planning that before they, you know, sourcing the funding. And I mean, all that will come out, and if obtaining a special use permit is just one step in that thing, they will, it will work itself and do the critical path.
I don't see where...
How that thing works. I, I see, it appears that there's two sides to this. One seems to be the general public getting cut out of having their say in it, and the other one being that it's, although it is providing emergency services, also just helping people that are developing more so than the general public.
I think we need to err on the side of the...
Allowing the public.
Allowing the public. Save their peace. That's what our job is. So I think they should have a say.
So as I understand it, then we would want to leave it to where a special use permit is required in all agricultural, residential, and low-intensity commercial zoning districts, being CPO and C1.
Yeah.
Madam Chair?
Need to make a motion for that?
Hit that one, Stanley. Get that one, Stanley. You got it. Come on, Stanley. You got this.
All right. Let's see.
We got that. We got the...
Let's see. Let's, let's try this. Let's make a motion to accept the text amendment changes for LDC 250001 as presented, with the exception of placement of emergency services in the sections for RV, temporary RV use, as annotated with Mr. Baker. Is that close enough? Can that get us in the ballpark?
Does that work? Mike, does that work?
Yeah, I think it'll probably work.
Okay.
What'd you say? You said you think that'll work?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
I hear a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion?
And Madam Chair, if I can?
Yes, sir.
To clarify, the motion right now is to recommend approval to the B OCC as presented, with the exception that emergency services still require a special use permit in ag, residential, CPO, C1, and with the exception of the proposed changes to RVs for temporary occupancy and the restoration of the temporary stay days.
Yes.
Correct.
And I should let you make the motion.
And, I'm saying. And the...
We add unregistered.
Adding the unregistered, the modification to that prohibition.
That's correct. Section 45-131, Section 2, Item F and Item 5, Item 3 and 5, yeah.
All right. So I got Mr. Morris and Mr. Hodge. Okay. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Any opposed? Unanimously approved. We can't leave quiet yet. We have the minutes from the January meeting.
I wasn't here.
I'll second.
Okay. Stanley and Justin.
Hopefully somebody videoed a soccer game.
All right. Any, any new business or old business?
I'm tired.
Monkey business? He taking a challenge coin there.
I'll give him out.
All right, folks. Thank you very much. It is 7:13. Ashley, thank you for being here. This meeting is adjourned. Matt, thank you. Please thank Michael for us.